This is a regular session. Could we please start with the roll call?
Yes, Mayor Coombs.
Present.
Councilmembers Bagley.
Here.
Binley. Levison.
Here.
Samore. Santos.
Here.
Witt. Mayor Coombs, we have a form.
Thank you. Please stand for a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Anyone wishing to speak at the first call, public invited to be heard, will be needed to add his or her name to the list outside the council chambers. Only those on the list will be invited to speak at the first public invited to be heard. Speakers who do not place their names on that list will be, have an opportunity to speak during the public hearing items this evening or at the final call of public invited to be heard on any of the items at the end of the meeting. There are no minutes to approve, so we'll move on to the next item.
Mayor and council, under item four, agenda revisions. As you will recall, since we have moved up the time that you get your packets to Tuesday instead of Friday, sometimes we do have things that we don't get quite on there. As you saw in your packet information, the supplemental that went out, Valerie did indicate that there were a couple of boards in the commission appointments that were not made at the last time that you were doing this. And so we have put those under your revised agenda. So item four A, if appropriate, Valerie will provide you the information and you can quickly make those appointments.
All right. Yeah, go ahead, Valerie.
Mayor Coombs and members of council, I'm Valerie Skidmore, your city clerk. And last week, or I guess it was last week when we made all those board and commission appointments, I skipped over the ones that didn't have ballots on your table. So we have a few that we missed, you can do those real quickly. The first one is the Callahan House Board, and you had two applicants to fill two positions. So if you would like to appoint those applicants, all we would need is a motion.
I move that we appoint the two applicants for those two positions. Okay, let's vote.
You will have to raise your hands because I'm not running into technology. Okay, seven deserve. The second one was the money accumulation pension board. We have one opening and one applicant for that as well.
Okay, I move that we accept the one applicant for the one position. Okay, let's vote.
Okay. The next one was the master board of appeals, and we do have one applicant for the alternate position. And so we just need a motion if you want to appoint Mr. Mallor.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we accept that one applicant for the alternate position.
Okay, and the next one is the planning and zoning commission alternates. And what we realized after we got back to the office the next morning and sorted it out, you actually appointed Joel Champion and Joshua Goldberg. The vote was exactly the same for both of those individuals, but the terms are different. So I just need some direction on who gets which term. So one of them ends on, in 2014, the other ends in 2012.
Councilmember Santos.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. If it's all right, I wouldn't move that we appoint Joshua Goldberg to the term ending 2014.
Any discussion? I guess not seeing none, let's vote.
Thank you very much.
And mayor, I do not have a report tonight, so going into public invited to be heard is appropriate.
All right. Steve Don Allen. Please state your name and address for the record, please.
Howdy, Steve Don Allen, 2437 Terranian, Longmont, Mayor say council members. Merry Christmas and happy holidays to one and all. Be good. Vote yes for a six-month moratorium. And not now to Longmont fracking. Remember, Santa Claus is watching you.
Chris Porzuchek.
Thank you. Very well done.
Third time's a charm.
My name is Chris Porzuchek. I live at 12624 Weld County Road 1. Thank you all, city council. Thank you to those of you who came out and visited and take a look at everything. I do appreciate that. I think it was important and it shows your interest, so thank you for that. I'm here tonight, did a little bit more research, found a little bit more on TOP. And in 2009, they refined another 6,000 for several violations adding up, including leakage, you know, some other simple stuff. But I think the bottom line is they're showing neglect, a consistent pattern of neglect, a lack of response from COGCC. It's pretty clear COGCC has their hands full with a lot. I think we all know that, 17,000 wells in Weld County. So with their hands being full, they're not following up and there's not enough follow-up on them, which is why I think we also do need the system on moratorium along with Mr. Don Allen. Because I think we need to make sure we have these pieces in place to do the inspections, but it's because it's pretty clear it's not being done. And if there's not somebody watching over these people, they're not getting it done, what's being told to have been done. And it takes fines and threatened lawsuits for them to get things done. I'm going to read a little brief statement here that I believe Carol, Carol Harmon, enforcement officer. I indicated on the phone, TOP needs a major change on how it deals with staff and commission rules. Coming into compliance now will help ease TOP's transition to the new, more stringent rules currently being deliberated by the commission. From my limited perspective, I see a commission that is intolerant of old ways of conducting oil and gas operations, and TOP seems to be stuck in that old groove. From a personal standpoint, I feel I'm going out on a limb by giving TOP an opportunity to prove to staff that it has really changed the way it does business. There is a history of frustration between staff and TOP. I hope that a continuance, I hope that a continuance of the pattern of behavior, pattern of violation hearings that helps TOP, rather than put off the inevitable. And I think the inevitable meaning we're pulling your license, which means they're threatening to take their license. Though you did not ask for my advice, I would encourage you to do all you can to convince TOP's decision makers to revamp and refocus the company to improve relationships with surface owners and regulatory officials. Cleaning up TOP sites and complying with COGCC will go a long way to those ends. Thank you, I'd like to submit this into record.
I think the next person must be a doctor because I can't read his writing. The first name's Joe, it was 126282 County Road 1. Okay, next one be Joseph Bassman, followed by Shelley Bassman.
Thank you very much. I'm Joe Bassman, 3414 Lakeview Circle, Mr. Mayor, council members. Cougar Land Services is requesting a permit to conduct a seismic survey on city property for Anadarko. The results of the survey will be used to locate the most opportune and profitable locations for drilling our community. Hence might be discovered that rich formations under Union Reservoir and Sandstone Park extend further west than previously thought. There might even be so-called plays under Macintosh Lake, the airport, the fairgrounds, Golden Ponds, Garden Acres Park, Rogers Grove, city golf courses, and our school grounds. The undermining of our community's property, health, and environment by the oil companies has no bounds. No good can come to the city by allowing Cougar to survey. Most importantly, the city does have the right, they do have the right, you have the right, to say no to Cougar. Our city is currently cooperating with oil and gas companies to place hundreds of wells throughout Union Reservoir and Sandstone Ranch, purportedly because we do not have the abilities to simply forbid that activity. Council members, if you had a choice, would you actively promote oil and gas drilling and fracking in our cherished parks, neighborhoods, and next to our schools? Allowing Cougar to survey is tantamount to promoting gas and oil wells within our city limits. Instead, our city government should be fighting for us tooth and nail to appropriately discourage and regulate the oil industry within our city limits. Please give yourselves time to understand Colorado state oil and gas regulations and how they ignore the needs of municipalities like ours. Take time to learn what power we have to implement our own regulations that are more protective than those that are currently in our code and in the state's regulations. Exercise your freedom and your judgment to say no, no to Cougar. Implement a moratorium effective tonight to stop accepting and processing applications for gas and oil facility permits until at least June 20th. We need at least that amount of time to protect ourselves from TOP's irresponsibilities. Thank you.
Shelley Bassman, followed by Marilyn Velchinsky.
My name is Shelley Bassman. I'm a Longmont resident at 3414 Lakeview Circle. Mayor Coombs and council. This packet contains 236 letters written to you by concerned Longmont residents. Many are handwritten and all are heartfelt. When we walk the neighborhoods and ask people about gas well and drilling, and gas well drilling and fracking in Longmont, we receive the resounding response, in our neighborhood, in our city. More than 500 have signed our petition. And many, when they sign the petition, then and there, took the time from their busy Christmas and holiday schedules to write to you personally. Longmonters do not want fracked oil, fracked gas wells, platforms in our neighborhoods or parks or schools. Many, if not most, of the writers asked for a reply from you. Therefore, we respectfully ask that this packet of the 236 letters be accepted into the city record, public record, for this council meeting. And we also have a CD-ROM of all the letters for each of you. Please read them and listen. We ask city council to stand up for us, to act on our behalf, for the people of Longmont. The signers of the petitions and the writers of the letters are also here, here. Tonight. We want them to, we want them to know that their letters have been delivered along with this request for action. Longmont City Council, please enact, implement a moratorium effective tonight to stop accepting and processing oil and gas permits, applications, for at least six months. Six months is the minimum moratorium that cities and counties from Texas to New Mexico to Colorado have enacted and are enacting to modernize their codes, drilling codes, and Longmont should exercise as much due diligence. Thank you.
Thank you, Shelley. Marilyn Velchinsky, followed by Renee LaFever Cox.
That was really good, considering your headquarters, a check to, Porzuchek to deal with for a few weeks. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, now that you're receiving the information you requested, please take time to be careful regarding the issues of gas and oil facility regulation in our city. No doubt, an application for a permit is standing just outside the door. The applicants are admittedly standing there now because they wish to avoid the more stringent requirements that the citizens will surely demand in the future. The applicant might submit an application for permits while our existing regulations remain on the books. If that happens, the city might lose this opportunity to have strict and comprehensive requirements that are secured by the force of law and cash escrow security. We need strict oil and gas regulations to protect the health, safety, and property of our entire community. You have an opportunity tonight to close the door to new applications. The community needs your leadership to protect us, and as our elected representatives, we expect it. Please take the action that will enable you to implement your decisions in the form of meaningful ordinances and code updates. Implement a moratorium effective tonight to stop accepting and processing applications for gas and oil facility permits for at least six months. Thank you so much for hearing me.
Thank you. Renee LaFever Cox, followed by Teresa Foster.
Greetings, Mayor Coombs and council. My name is Renee LaFever's Cox. I presently reside at 2029 Meadow Drive. And I'm grateful to have the opportunity to speak with you concerning the issue of fracking within the city of Longmont. I grew up in southeast New Mexico and have seen the nature of the beast when it comes to oil and gas production. Although I realize the industry is working on ways to move towards a more friendly, enviofriendly, huh, sorry, for a more enviofriendly, I can assure you, quality of life, the environment, your water supply, and beautiful vistas are not their priority. Of course, money is the main theme. We are seeing a land grab rush before further regulation can be implemented in Colorado, North Dakota, and surrounding areas. Wars have been fought, lives lost, nations fallen, are this boom and bust resource. So I can understand the economics of the situation and how it entertains it. Boulder County has already buckled due to the giant by operations in and around open space, lured by the promises of riches, not realizing the damage that we will have done to the earth for generations to follow. I urge you to watch the movie Gasland. Understand what the word fracture entails. Cracking and creating space within the rock, pushing up gases from earth's deep core, has been linked with an increase of earthquakes. The EPA has just established and confirmed the high likelihood of water and aquifer contamination, though those in the industry have known this all along. With water being our most precious and valuable resource, now and in the future, why would you even consider an industry within the city limits that enjoys an exemption from most federal laws concerning environmental protection, the Clean Water Act, the Clean Air Act, consumer protection, health, and public safety? You may pad your pockets, but overall, housing values will drop. You will not have to question your air quality, you will be able to smell it. The amount of traffic alone, coming and going, will be a daunting and blaring glare of production, droning 24/7. Not to mention benzene and the other carcinogen-laced fracking fluids and the huge amount of water that is used, as well as wastewater disposed of in pits, ponds, and possible runoff into rivers and streams. Pockets of undetected methane have been proven literally deadly. If you adore Longmont and the quality of life down here, I implore you to a sense of urgency, knowing this council and our community has the opportunity to change things by setting a high standard in our approach to this ever-growing, over-consuming monster of greed. Not just for me, but I can hear future generations whispering, please, set a moratorium tonight, no fracking in Longmont, please.
Thank you very much. Except Teresa Foster, followed by James Kenworthy.
Good evening, council and mayor Coombs. My name's Teresa Foster and I live at 712 Thornwood Way. I'm here tonight to ask you to implement a moratorium effective tonight to stop accepting and processing applications for gas and oil facility permits for at least six months. As you might have heard, there is a nightmare already occurring in Longmont related to natural gas drilling, the Ryder Well that has leaked benzene for years. I hope you've had a chance to read today's Times Call article. Longmont well site has benzene levels almost 100 times state limit. I'm wondering how TOP operating can manage a new well if they can't manage the ones they have in have in place. I wanted to point out a comment made by a representative of the COGCC. You probably could never totally get the property back to its original condition if there is a spill. Is this the same person who assured us that the COGCC rules would protect the citizenry of the state of Colorado from natural gas drilling? No, their mission is to provide support to the oil and gas industry. This is why I urge you to proceed with at least a six-month moratorium. Our city needs breathing rooms so that we can fully understand the implications of drilling for natural gas. If this isn't passed, it implies that council doesn't care about the health and well-being of the Longmont citizens. I'm also providing each one of you with a DVD titled, "What You Need to Know About Natural Gas Production." This movie gives an overview of what you can expect from the oil and gas industry and was developed by Dr. Theo Colborne, founder and president of the Endocrine Disruption Exchange based in Peonia, Colorado. She is an environmental health analyst and has written a scientific report called "Natural Gas Operations From A Public Health Perspective." Dr. Colborne has expert knowledge of the detrimental health effects of fracking chemicals, including benzene spills. She is available to answer questions that the city council might have on long-term effects of benzene exposure and other fracking fluids. Thank you.
Thank you, Teresa. Next, David Pelster. Oh, excuse me, Jim Kinworthy. Next, then, David.
Thank you. James Kinworthy, 107 Caribou Place. As I said last week, I have no problem giving you my address, because I'm gonna do my little part in addressing this issue as well as I can. Let's review. Benzene causes cancer, weakens the immune system, affects the blood system, and affects the nervous system. This man told you that our regulations are out of date. Dale Radamaker, I believe, told you about the leaking benzene out by the Conne Line Road. What more do you need to know? Well, there's some, there are some more things. There's methane, V-Tex compounds, toline, ethylbenzene, and xylene. I haven't researched these yet. It doesn't take much, all you have to do is Google them. There are a lot of issues here that need to be fixed, worked on, and it's gonna take a long time. You got leaking gas, you got water issues. That needs to be reviewed carefully. Traffic, noise, lights. What we need is some stringent, up-to-date regulations that are drawn up by some knowledgeable people. Couple of weeks ago, I told my oldest son that I was gonna come down here and talk, and he said in a joking manner that he was, he was sure that I would represent the family. So I'm gonna tell you who I'm talking for. I'm talking for my two sons, their two loved ones. I know three of the loved ones' parents, I'm talking for them. I'm talking for a couple that's out of town. I'm talking for one of their neighbors that makes really good beer. I'm talking for a friend of mine who had cataract surgery yesterday and can't be here. I'm talking for her two-year-old granddaughter. I know three people named Hanson. They've got the last name, but they are as different as they can be, except for one fact: they respect the earth and they want this issue to be worked out. So, before I run out of time, I want to tell you that if you asked all these people, they could probably, they could draw up a similar list within, in 15 minutes. So every person that speaks here, and every person that's here that doesn't speak, they represent a lot more people. So, I'm also speaking for a retired attorney, he's 87 years old. He was a Marine in the Pacific in World War II. He was on Wake Island during that battle. If he was here, you'd know it. I'm speaking for him. I'm speaking for a friend of mine that has MRSA, that's an infection that you catch in the hospital, is chronic. Okay, my time's up, thank you very much.
Thank you, James.
The list is a lot longer.
David Pelster, followed by Andy Jamison.
Ladies and gentlemen of the City Council, my name is David Pelster. I live at 1574 Goslock Drive in Longmont, 1,000 feet from the proposed Boulder County Consolidated Drilling Location. This location is just 500 feet northeast of the Trail Ridge Middle School. It's just 2,500 feet southeast from the Fall River Elementary School. I live 500 feet from the TOPS Ryder One Well, which is known to have benzene contamination, and my five-year-old attends kindergarten at Fall River. I speak for my wife and my three children, five years, three years, and six months. We are against fracking within the city limits. We live in a residential zone, not an industrial zone, next to schools. We bought our first home just 10 months ago, here in Longmont. I requested for a transfer to Longmont because we thought it was an ideal location to raise our family. And I thought I did everything right, the responsible way. I worked hard and made sacrifices to stay out of debt and put away money for 10 years to make this down payment for our first home in Longmont. I never dreamed that buying a home in the suburbs within city limits meant that I'd have a drilling rig in my backyard, tankers hauling carcinogens, thousands of gallons of toxic chemicals. Just due to the drilling operations alone, my home value loss could be substantial. I ask that you put yourself in my situation. My primary goal is to protect my family. Can you guarantee that either the current or improved regulations and restrictions that my family continues to have safe water to drink and clean air to breathe for the next 15 years? Can you guarantee that the oil and gas exploration next to my home over the life of the well will not give my children leukemia, my wife breast cancer? Can you guarantee me retribution for home value loss? The bottom line is that even with rules and regulations, there are accidents. If Union Reservoir smells like rotten eggs, do you think corporations like I have worked for, Intel, working on cutting-edge technology for storage, will be able to attract those with the necessary skills of Longmont? Isn't that the type of industry we want to welcome to Longmont? I request that you represent our future, my family, and my community, and do what is needed to stop fracking within the city limits until we have the right protections in place. The first step that you, the council stewards of our city, can do to protect me and my family and protect Longmont's quality of life is to implement a moratorium beginning today, December 20th, to stop accepting applications for gas and oil facility permits within the city for at least six months. Thank you.
Andy Jamison.
Mayor, council members, my name's Andy Jamison. I'm, live at 1760 Montgomery Circle up in Longmont, just off of U Creek Golf Course, just right down by the well. My five-year-old daughter goes to Fall River. I am a senior completions engineer for Noble Energy. Work in the oil and gas industry, have for 10 years. One of the things that I'd like to talk about a little bit is the state of Colorado has the most stringent oil and gas rules on the books already. We have, and when we talk about that the city of Longmont doesn't have the rules that have been updated, the state has already gone into a lot of this. I've worked in Wyoming, I've worked in Utah, I've worked in, in Texas, I've worked in Oklahoma. In all of those places, the laws are not nearly so stringent as the state of Colorado. We currently have these laws on the books, the COGC does a very good job. Now, they're taxed very hard, and I agree with that, but hydraulic fracking, all that kind of stuff, none of this that we're doing out is new. Our company has, or for at least the last year, has documented everything that we put in our frac fluids and put in ground. You can go to fracfocus.org and look at that, you know, and I believe the COGCC last week passed a bill that requires everybody now to document and make available to the public what's put in frac fluid. Fracking isn't something that's new, it's been done since the 1940s. Hundreds and hundreds of thousands of wells have been fracked with very, very mineral problems. Now, sometimes problems do happen, but it's our job at the oil companies, I mean, the most important thing we deal with every day is protecting the environment, protecting the people that work for us and that are in the communities that we are, and making sure that everything is a safe operation and is done the best way possible. What I would say is get really involved with, with understanding what the COGCC looks at and does, what they're doing and how involved they truly are in the business. I think you'll be surprised at, we are the most regulated state in oil and gas already. There aren't any states anywhere close to as regulated as we currently are in the state of Colorado. And we do as much as we can to do it right. We want to do every well right, we want to do everything we can to do it the right way. But oil and gas is a very, very, you know, important part of everybody's lives. Everybody took a hot shower, that was from natural gas. Everybody, most people drove here tonight. It's, it's something that's in our lives, and it needs to be regulated, and the state does a very thorough job of looking into that. And then I, what I would ask you is to, to really understand everything that they regulate, look at, and what you can add to that, you know? Thanks very much.
Thank you. Tobias Schuck, followed by Tim Shannon.
Thank you and good evening. I once had the pleasure of spending five months in the little town of Artesia, New Mexico, at the Federal Law Enforcement Training Academy. The water is so bad there that you really don't even want to shower with it, let alone brush your teeth with it. Even when we went to the cafeteria to eat our food, we could taste volatile organics and vegetables. The difference between a light bulb and a fracking job that has gone bad is that you can unscrew the light bulb. You cannot uncontaminate mega tons of soil. You cannot uncontaminate mega tons of underground aquifer. You can't magically wave a wand and make the cancers, the respiratory ailments, the endocrine problems go away once they have contaminated an urban area. I have spent a considerable amount of time in Garfield County, in the area around Delta, Colorado, southwest Utah, especially in the area of Desolation Canyon, where we launch for rafting trips in the aural, and I can tell you of the absolute devastation that those areas have faced. I've been to areas where there, which are completely devoid of any wildlife, including birds. And I can't think of any other reason, except for the extreme oil and gas activity in that area, that could have possibly caused such devastation. If anyone here in this room thinks that the federal government, or any state agency, provides any meaningful level of protection, you are badly mistaken. Colorado may have more regulations on the books than other states, but certainly not enough, and nowhere near the personnel or the money to properly monitor this industry. This industry, if allowed to come into Longmont, will destroy this community. I think there, I remember seeing something about quality of life on the city charter. Therefore, I'd urge the city council to enact a six-month moratorium tonight and take a really hard look at this very complex, very difficult issue, and develop a set of stringent regulations that can ensure the safety and welfare of the community. Thank you.
Can I get your address, please? You stated your name, but not your address, I believe.
My apologies. 3841, that's 3841 Florentine Drive.
Tim Shannon, followed by Gene Disler, Ditzler.
Hello, my name's Tim Shannon. I'm president of 1243 Grouse Court here in Longmont. I currently have two kids, one in Fall River and the other one at Trail Ridge. I am a production engineer for Noble Energy. Coming out here to just talk a little bit about what we're doing. We currently have a clear regulatory structure. This is helping our company stay within our boundaries, what we need, what needs to happen. It's helping protect environmental, safety, and health within our industry and around the residents that, where we're working. The state of Colorado provides this structure, which is a Colorado, the COGCC. It effectively regulates the oil and gas industry. They're regulating from the start, the initiation of the well, site selection, all the way through drilling, fracturing, through final disposal. Every aspect of the oil and gas department is regulated from that site selection. The county already has, or the state provides the effective regulations, and is important to stay consistent without, within all counties of the, the state. This will ensure all regulatory certainty, reduce any redundancy, pretty much saying that no matter what county we go to, we all imply the same move through in and throughout. Therefore, I sort of would like just to say let's follow the COGCC rule.
Gene Disler, or Ditzler.
I'm Gene Ditzler, I live at 1541 Tucker Drive. Mr. Mayor and City Council, thank you. Three houses separate me from the property where the proposed 10 to 20-head gas well will be located. I am the mother of two children, Leah and Emmett, who currently attend Fall River Elementary School. When we were looking for a house in 2001, we wanted a decent school, a clean and beautiful neighborhood, not close to noise and congestion, major roads, industry. The area we currently live in seemed perfect. We researched what was going into the open spaces near our house, concerned what kind of building would happen there in the future. Would it remain farm? Would it be developed? It never, ever occurred to us to ask about the possibility of gas drilling, and at that time, we had never even heard of fracking. So we chose a lot in the new development, making sure it wasn't too close to the major roads, to the corner, to a large power line. We lived in the condos nearby and walked over every day as our dream house was being built, introducing ourselves to our future neighbors, decorating everything in our heads. Our first, and we thought only, home. How silly all of our care seems now. How unwise of us to become attached to the house, the neighbors we have come to love, the school we have come to be proud to have our children in. Last night, I cried, thinking, saying goodbye to this home, my neighbors, of asking my children to say goodbye to their teachers, their friends. I got up a map, and I looked across Longmont to figure out where I can move. I looked north along 66, but I heard that very soon the fracking will be there. I thought, out closer to the mountains, but I read that Front Range is the next big fracking boom. I can't figure out where I will be safe, where my children will be safe, and I certainly can't imagine what other place will feel like home. But I also can't imagine staying here and letting my children live and go to school next to this large, industrial, dangerous eyesore. Even if you don't believe that fracking has the potential to poison our water supply, which has recently been reported by the EPA in Virginia, Wyoming, even if you don't believe that gas drilling can poison the groundwater, which is well documented by the COGCC at the existing single gas well right next to Trail Ridge Middle School, even if you don't believe in the ecological impacts this would have, I ask you to research what a site like this looks like, how many trucks are brought in, what kind of traffic, noise pollution, and what kind of gases are released into the air during the regular processes deemed necessary for fracking a site. I ask you to please declare a moratorium tonight on gas drilling and permitting of at least six months. Carefully weigh how close these gas wells can be to residential areas and schools, what safeguards can be required, and take this time to create municipal code to protect Longmont's property values, our schools, our children, and our homes. Thank you.
Thank you. Dan Ditzler, followed by Cynthia Martinez.
City Council, Mayor Combs, thank you. My name's Dan Ditzler, I live at 1541 Tucker Drive. I, as you just heard from my wife, we live very close in proximity to the, the current site, and she told you briefly how we chose our home. I'd like to go into a little bit different perspective on how, on the way I see things. East of us, they're building, they, they built this elementary school, they built a middle school, and unbeknownst to us, Ingle Holmes had found that there were, and still are, amounts of benzene that are in their soil samples that are well excessive to what they should be. Samples that were requested, they were requested by the, sent requests to the COGCC and TOP, the owner of the well, to clean it up. After repeated, ignored violations, false claims of remediation... violations, uh, false claims of, of remediation, um, efforts, and even requests by TOP to hold back and clean up possibly after the school season was over because it was deemed too dangerous to do while the children were in, in session, the property to, property to date is still not able to be built on. Now, TOP, the same company would be, would, that did not and would not, uh, remediate the, the benzene camp contamination, wants to build ten to twenty more wells in that same area. And the very same place where the show, home should be because their failure to clean up what is not, what, what should be there now. I don't know if this is coincidence, but I don't think it is. There are five hundred students at Fall River Elementary School. My ton, my daughter, son goes to school with your, your daughters, and there are six hundred more at Trail Ridge. I extend that out to parents, siblings, families, couples, retirees, apartment complexes, condos, businesses, and of course, even the, 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 uh, school staff that have come in their day in and day out. And you're looking at conservatively ten thousand people within that area. So one eighth of the city of Longmont is directly affected by environmentally, financially, when the property values go down, and even help their health. The city ordinance, uh, says that's a standard setback for certain businesses based on evidence concerning adverse secondary effects on the community, and I would re, would argue that this is definitely a direct effect. Uh, the elementary school has a motto over there, and I'm sure you've heard it a ton of, tons of times, Gabe, the courage to be outstanding. I would ask the city council to do, ex, to abide by that same motto and impose a moratorium for at least six months on gas drilling, fracking, permitting within the city of Longmont's effective tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Cynthia Martins?
Good evening, council members and mayor. My name is Cynthia Pocorni Martinez. I live at one four six six seven Race Street in Thornton, Colorado, and I've made Colorado my home for the past twenty-five years. And as a concerned neighboring citizen, I'm here tonight offering my support to the Longmont residents who are here asking the council to implement a moratorium effective tonight to stop accepting and processing applications for oil and gas facility permits for at least six months. Uh, what happens here in Longmont affects all of us, and our health matters and must come first. Thank you.
Thank you. Kate Johnson?
Good evening. I'm Kate Johnson. My address is one one two-two-seven North Sixty-Sixth Street. Thank you, mayor and council, for allowing me to speak tonight. As we've heard so far tonight, and as you'll continue to hear, there are dozens of people in this room, and many others who cannot be here tonight, who have spent hundreds, if not thousands, of hours educating themselves about hydraulic fracturing. They've researched it from every angle. They've learned the terminologies. They've unearthed some startling facts that most of us in this community are not aware of, but should be. How many of you on the city council have had time to read all the information these hardworking community members have gathered and distributed to you? I know some of you are new to this position. I know you have many other demands and pressing issues, and admittedly, it's a busy time of the year for all of us. If you haven't had time to properly digest all the facts, figures, terminologies, and concerns laid out in the packets of information that have been presented to you in the past days and weeks, it's certainly understandable. Not to mention the time you would need to revisit the current land use codes and regulations and bring them up to speed. This is the very reason why it is imperative that you implement a moratorium tonight to stop accepting or processing applications for these gas and oil frac, facility permits for at least six months, so that you can properly educate yourselves about this incredibly complex and potentially dangerous issue and put the necessary regulations in place. You are our elected officials. You owe it to your constituents and your community to put even a fraction of the amount of time into this, as these citizens have already done. But without a moratorium tonight, before any applications come in, you just won't have the time to get it right. The following names are people who are also Longmont citizens and could not be here tonight, but wanted me to tell you that they too support a request for you to implement a moratorium. Joanna Coob, Sarah and Stephen Peterson, Denise Crawford, Mindy Eckhart, Barbara Walts, Cheryl Larson, John and Annie Barth, Mary Magdalena, Sharon Esposito, Jody McCain, Heidi and Devin Quince. Thank you.
Thank you, Kate. Uh, Judith Blackburn followed by Judy LeBeau?
Good evening. I too come before you to urge you to implement a moratorium.
Could you please state your name and address first?
Oh, I'm sorry. Judith Blackburn, uh, thirty-seven twenty-four Oakwood Drive. Such a moratorium will allow for the revisiting and modifying of our existing code structure and regulations in order to protect our health, safety, and property before new exploration or drilling is begun. Decisions on hydraulic fracturing are too important to be rushed, and we tonight have a window of opportunity to do the prudent thing. Although hydraulic fracturing has been going on for some time, these newer, deeper, and more dangerous horizontal drillings are relatively new and require much more stringent oversight. Only recently have we begun to read about fracking in our local paper. It feels as though it came upon us very quickly. My reasoning for supporting a moratorium echoes what you've all heard before. The issues are simply too complicated and fraught with implications for the future of our community. I have concern about potential water and air contamination, especially near schools and on open space land. I experience anger about the millions of gallon, gallons of precious fresh water that will forever leave the earth's water cycle in the fracking process. I have empathy with the homeowners, some of whom you've heard from tonight, whose water has already been compromised and whose health has already been degraded. I, I regret that so much western landscape has already been ruined or is now threatened with the noise, traffic, and ugliness of the well sites. I worry that the legislators, agencies, and commissions designed to protect us are unaware or unwilling to do so. I understand that the economic times tempt citizens and politicians to accept immediate gain while neglecting long-range consequences. I realize that the amount of information available on this topic is difficult to delve into and is more or less outside the realm of the average person's interests, especially during the holiday season. But you and we here are trying to do the right thing. For all of these reasons, the citizens of Longmont will be behind you one hundred percent as you implement a moratorium for at least six months to stop accepting applications for gas and oil facility permits. Thank you.
Thank you. Judy LeBeau? Followed by John Martin?
Hi, my name is Judy Lubow. It's close enough. Um, and I live at one oh six Granada Court in Longmont. Good evening, Mayor Coombs and city council members. Um, a long time ago, I had a research project to do when I worked for the EPA. I had to research contamination at the Rocky Mountain Arsenal. In that research, I learned something that was startling to me, that the US Army had actually caused earthquakes here in Colorado when it injected waste fluids from the arsenal deep into the earth via injection wells. Over thirteen hundred earthquakes were recorded between nineteen sixty-three and sixty-seven until the army finally stopped injecting the waste. I remember thinking at that time in my youthful arrogance, what bimbos? Who would inject toxic materials into the earth and not expect earthquakes? Well, after much embarrassment and many earthquakes, the army finally figured it out. But now, it seems people haven't learned very much. We know that there is at least some link between the fracking process and earthquakes. For instance, according to the British newspaper, The Independent, the UK's sole operational fracking site in Blackpool has been suspended due to earthquakes. Further, a scientific report concluded that it is highly probable that there was a connection between the fracking and the two earthquakes that occurred in the Blackpool area. I personally believe there are just too many serious problems with fracking to jump in and approve permits without more review and hopefully even code upgrades. Therefore, I also requested you implement a six-month moratorium. Um, I have some internet articles about man-made earthquakes, um, and if you'd like to see them, I can give them to you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. John Martin followed by Wendell Salas?
Well, now for something completely different. Mayor Coombs, councilmen, councilwomen, uh, happy Hanukkah, Merry Christmas, and for the Seinfeld fans, Happy Festivus. Um, I wasn't able to come to the, uh, the meeting a couple of weeks ago, and we were talking about the airport and the noise. And as a concerned citizen here in town, as a small business owner, uh, I am very concerned about a vocal, uh, minority, a handful of people who are, uh, uh, raising big issues about the noise of one particular company, Mile High, uh, skydiving. Uh, I have no skin in the game here. I don't even know the owner of that company. I don't know anybody that works for them. Uh, I have had the pleasure of jumping from one of their planes once in my life in spite of my severe fear of heights. Most exhilarating thing I ever did. Really enjoyed it. This is a great little business out there at the airport, and I would hate to see a small handful of people, some of whom don't even live in Longmont, uh, raising concerns and trying to drive this company out of business, probably getting them to move somewhere out in Erie, Boulder, who knows where. Um, but I, I really ask you guys to defend the small business. The company generates sales taxes, hires dozens of people out there. The one time I did jump, uh, there were people that had come in to Longmont from Utah, and there were a couple from Wyoming as well who came to jump. That's all they came for. It's drawing people into our city. Lava should be embracing this organization and this company and trying to promote it further. So, don't let a handful of vocal, uh, people, uh, some of whom don't even live in our town, who don't live close to the airport, complain about this noise and drive a really good company out of town. Thanks.
Thank you, John. Uh, Wendell Salas? Followed by Nancy Hall?
Good evening, council members, uh, public. Uh, my name's Wendell Salas. I live in Firestone. Just recently moved there. Um, I work for Halliburton. Uh, been doing hydraulic fracturing for fifteen years, uh, all across the Rocky Mountains. Um, I can tell you that my whole take on this is such. Um, I've lived in Vernal, Utah, Farmington, New Mexico, Raton, New Mexico, and Trinidad, Colorado, in my time in the oil and gas industries. All these towns have extensive oil and gas operations occurring around the towns and even within city limits. The water there does not taste bad. The vegetables do not taste like carcinogens. Um, and these communities, for the most part, are thriving. Uh, one of the operations that I've worked on in the Raton area was actually on the Vermeil Park Ranch. For those who here who do not, do not know what that is, that's one of Ted Turner's properties, okay? Right now, there are currently over six hundred gas wells on that ranch. Ted Turner charges well over twelve thousand dollars per hunter to go there and hunt on his land. Do you think he could do that if his land looked like an industrial waste? Okay. Fracturing operations can't be done environmentally responsibly. The idea too, I hear a lot about, uh, benzene and toluene and all these thousands of chemi, thousands of gallons of this, these carcinogenic chemicals that we're pumping in the ground. I hope you understand, and I hope you go and do the research, but that is untrue. Ninety-five percent of what we pump is water. As far as I know, what we currently pump in the ground does not have any benzene or toluene in it. And that's a simple fact, and you can look that up, because we disclose the chemicals that we pump on, in the ground. Um, that's what I have. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Wendell. Uh, Nancy Hall, who's speaking for Heidi Quince?
Thank you, uh, council members, Mayor, Mayor Coombs. I'm, I was asked to read a letter from one of your residents, Heidi Quince. My name is Nancy Hall. I'm at one-two-eight-nine-two Sherrandy Street. Heidi is at nine-eleven Venice Street. Um, her letter reads as follows. My name is Heidi Quince. I live at nine-eleven Venice Street in Longmont. I have been a petroleum geologist for sixteen years. There are numerous uncertainties when drilling oil and gas wells, whether near inhabited regions or far from cities and towns. No matter how good our technology is, we still cannot see directly into the ground below us. Residents may never be able to prove that oil and gas wells have contaminated the groundwater, and drilling companies may ever, never be able to disprove any of their claims. Contamination of groundwater is only one of the many problems that must be addressed before drilling continues near Longmont. A claim that drilling will bring jobs is truly short-sighted. Even if locals are employed, what happens after the oil and gas is extracted? An ugliness will be left behind, which our precious taxpayer money will have to clean up. In addition to energy conservation, Colorado is leading the way in research and development of renewable energy sources. These are the areas we need to focus on and not continue to pursue non-renewable sources from hydrocarbons. Hydraulic fracturing says it all. Water, precious, rare, and essential. Water is used in the billions of gallons in the process. It's hard to even imagine the massive amount. For comparison, Union reservoir holds less than ten billion gallons. John McGee, water manager for the city of Loveland, has said that drillers, quote, "may need more water than we have," close quote. Thus, trucking all that water uses, it, trucking all that water in uses petroleum. Um, that's what's being drilled for. Just save the petroleum in the first place. If, the water itself cannot be used by any living being for millions of years, if ever, because of the contaminants in it. It can never, ever, ever be filtered for reuse for humans or any other animals. Contamination pools are often left to evaporate, bringing all those toxic chemicals into our atmosphere. The oil companies want to keep them secret. It's, it's just simply a crime that they want to bring in their secret potions and then leave them behind. Even if they take them away, where will they take them? All water supplies are connected. Halliburton claims to have a safer recipe and is reducing the ratio of contaminants to water, which means that they even admit their concoctions are dangerous. Fracturing, the breaking apart of a rock below, also known as earthquakes. From nineteen sixty-one to sixty-six, fluid was injected into wells drilled in Rocky Mountain Arsenal near Stapleton. They triggered earthquakes where no active faults existed. Numerous earthquakes have been experienced in seismically inactive areas in Oklahoma, Texas, and Arkansas where fracking is being used. If fracking will continue to be allowed in Colorado, our building codes need to be modeled after those in California, Oregon, Washington State, Alaska, and Japan, where the earth, where the effects of earthquakes are all too familiar. Even my draw, job as a petroleum geologist will go the way of the dodo, but I still retain the geological knowledge to help our community make wise cho, choices when it comes to our shared ecosystem. The oil companies do not work in a vacuum, although they tend to act that way. We need to make it as difficult as possible to drill in Longmont. With all the unknowns, no one can be certain or can guarantee a good outcome. Sincerely, Heidi Quince.
Thank you, Nancy. Strider Benson?
Greetings. My name is Strider Benson. Um, nine fifty-one Seventeenth Avenue. Um, we're trying to drag the mountains down to bring in a couple more, more gas wells, more scars upon the land. Let's not forget why we live in Colorado. Um, if it is so safe to crack, then why are they so afraid of a six-month moratorium so that we at least have a chance to find out the facts? The point is to prevent oversight, to prevent the restrictions that would mandate cleanup and safety. Um, Grover Norquist demanded a fealty oath from most of the United States Congress, demanded that they swear a personal oath to him. that they swear a personal oath to him that they would never, ever raise taxes under any circumstances, except on the working class, which they did yesterday. All right, well, oops. He also said that the point is to starve governments so small that I can drown it in the bathtub. This is exactly what they're talking about, to prevent the public having either the tools or the right to save their own lives and protect their land and at least get a serious look at what the issues are before something is handed over to some massive rich corporation who only has one goal, one goal, officially and legally, one goal, to see how much money they can make. And that is the only value. Elections have consequences. We see what has happened. We see that just in the last day, 160 million Americans who actually work for a living got their taxes raised. And our congressman, Cory Gardner, supported that move to raise the taxes on the working class. Right here in Longmont, last week, I wanted to speak. I wasn't allowed to speak, but board selections were made, and three well-known environmentalists got a total of three out of a possible 21 votes to be on the environmental board. But at least one person who has no concern for the environment and no experience, at least one such person, was put on the environmental board. Take a look at who is running Longmont, and let's see if we can save our city.
Thank you, Strider. Stanley Poel, followed by Dave Evans.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs and council. My name is Stan Poel. I'm a resident of the city of Longmont. I came last week, and I was talking about being blocked from being able to appeal. Now, we just had a hearing, and it has become extremely evident that the prosecutor, the city prosecutor, is engaging in ethics violations. There's a claim that I didn't file the right paperwork to indicate that I've been financially destitute. They were claiming that, well, it doesn't have municipal court on the form. It doesn't matter that I filled out the form, and this half, the form that I used was the form that the Colorado Supreme Court has sent a directive to all courts in the state of Colorado that they are to use this form for people to fill out when they are lacking the funds to do something. Now, the other thing is, is that the Court of Appeals has made a ruling that if a person is destitute and they cannot afford to produce, you know, to post a deposit, to do a transcript, that the court is supposed to find ways that a person can do appeal. Now, there is a procedure under the appellate rules for producing the record, and, you know, that is 10D. And the appellate court has said that the court is supposed to take that into consideration or some other means that a person... Now, what happened to me is when I suggested to use this procedure, the city prosecutor refused to provide any, he refused to respond to my request. And then they are claiming that this doesn't apply to municipal court because I did not put in the appellate court ruling saying that this court's supposed to use that. Now, that's a pure ethics violation because under the state law, this city, the prosecutor is supposed to ensure that justice is served. And if there's a person who can't afford to appeal and he wants to appeal, it is ethically, under state law, required that the city prosecutor assist that person. Now, I would like some sort of review of this. I'm basically destitute. I can't hire attorneys. When I've asked for the appointment of attorneys, I've had them denied. There was a fiction that, oh, you're not going to be jailed. Well, I was jailed for one day, and so that's totally unethical. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Dave Evans, followed by Jeff Thompson.
I'm Dave Evans. I live at 601 Folklore Avenue. I'm a Longmont resident, obviously. I have a seven-year-old daughter, and we use Union Reservoir quite a bit. We love the city of Longmont, and it's pretty obvious, you know, the facts have been presented to you guys. You guys have the information, the research, that there's big questions going on with fracking right now. Obviously, we have concerns environmentally, safety-wise, and I just don't see the state of Colorado having the regulations and, you know, the capability to enforce what's going on with, you know, for having spilled. A gentleman from the company said accidents happen. Well, you know, they happened, and nothing's been done to clean it up. So, you know, I also implored you, you know, have a six-month moratorium on processing applications, and I urge you guys to take some time, you know, make sure that we have the regulations in place, that we can ensure the safety, you know, especially around schools, around the reservoir or natural resources. You know, it would be horrible to see something happen here, and, you know, I just don't see the safety net in place. So I ask you guys to have a moratorium so we can investigate, get it, get it under control.
Thank you, Dave. Jeff Thompson, followed by Tisha Schuler.
Jeff Thompson, 1616 Summer Street. Mayor Coombs and city council, please enact the moratorium tonight for at least six months so we can sort all this out. I want to respond to something I read in a Times call this morning. It was a statement by Mr. Murray of Top Operating, and he was complaining that if the city enacted this moratorium tonight, he stands to lose a lot of money. I want to explain what the law is on that. If you purchase mineral rights and then sit on them for 30 years or more and don't recover the minerals, and in that period of time, a nearby city grows so that your mineral rights interest is surrounded by a city, people, houses, schools, parks, open space, good roads, everything that a city entails, such that you cannot recover your minerals without endangering the health and safety of the people and their enjoyment of our parks and open space and everything that's good about Longmont, then you've waited too late, and you're out of luck, and you have no legal standing to complain because you just plain waited too long. That can happen. There's a lot of legal smoke being blown around this issue by the oil and gas lobby. You've, I've sure heard about the court cases that are being asserted as excuses or reasons why the city cannot protect itself. And I think that if you will study these cases, you will find that they actually offer us excellent guidance on how we can protect our people and protect our interests and do so perfectly legally without any problems. So it's like I'm running out of time. I just want to say, please, in the spirit of the holidays, enact this moratorium so we can all enjoy the rest of the holidays in peace and happy holidays. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Tisha Schuler, followed by Marco Morella.
Mayor Coombs, city council members. I'm Tisha Schuler. I'm at 6060 Lincoln. I'm here representing the Colorado oil and gas industry. I'm also a mother of two children, an environmental scientist and geologist, and a Boulder County resident. And I want to commend you on having another forum on education on the oil and gas industry, and thank you for your attention to this matter. I also want to let you know and the members of the public here know that the industry is engaged, and we hear your concern. And in fact, the industry is your neighbors. Those of us that work in the oil and gas industry in Colorado, we work and live in these communities, and you've heard from a few of them tonight. The oil and gas industry has more than 100-year history of operating in Colorado within our communities, and I hope that this isn't lost on you. This is a robust history that we have here in Colorado, and there's many communities that you can go to to see how the oil and gas industry can operate within a community. Further, some of the incidents that you've heard about are historic incidents. For example, the leaking pit that's in, that's in Longmont is a historic incident that wouldn't happen under today's regulations or today's operating practices. And this is relevant because in 2008, Colorado enacted the toughest rules in the country, and they cover every aspect of oil and gas operations. And further, there's a local government designee process that's in place to give city councils such as yourself the opportunity to engage in a meaningful way in all of the permitting activities that affect your city. So I do respectfully disagree with some of the people who have spoken tonight. There is a clear role for the city, but that role is within the confines of the state process. You will be hearing from more members of the public and from a speaker tonight. I want to let you know that at the request of staff, I will be here to answer your questions. Whether something comes up about earthquakes or water use or the movie Gasland, I'll be happy to come tonight or night in the future to answer your questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Marco Morelli, followed by Shane Schultz.
Thank you, mayor and city council members. My name is Marco Morelli. I live at 409 Baker Street, and I want to share my perspective on this fracking issue. I wasn't even sure that I was going to show up tonight. I was taking a nap, and something woke me up and I realized I needed to come. And the reason is not, I'm not going to recapitulate all of the concerns that people have already expressed. I definitely share those concerns. I came to the Longmont Library and watched, when I found out that the fracking was going to take place, I started, you know, doing Google searches about it and reading about it. I came and watched Gasland, and I got really pissed off. There's a lot of disturbing material in that movie, and there's a lot of anecdotal evidence and apparently scientific evidence that is a matter of, you know, of concern. But as I was walking home from the library in the cold to my warm house, I realized that, well, I'm going to a warm house that, you know, is heated by natural gas. I drive a car that's, you know, fueled by gasoline. And so in a, there's a, there's a complicated issue here. We're all part of the problem. And so just from a moral and ethical perspective, I don't think it's, I think it's difficult to come down on one side and say, this is wrong, we can't do it. On the other hand, I try to take a bigger, longer-term view, and, you know, when we look into the future, what energy is going to be? Where are we going to get our energy in the future? It's not going to be gas. It's not going to be oil. We need to move to a cleaner, more sustainable, less ugly and dangerous fuel source. And that's not in 200 or 300 years, that's in 10, 20, 30 years. So I want to ask, what about this issue, what about the way that we respond to this issue is going to put us on a trajectory to move toward that better future, move toward that cleaner energy source in the future? And, you know, I don't know if it's a six-month moratorium now, or, I definitely think it is increased regulations just to protect people's health and protect, you know, protect the concerns of all, you know, my fellow community members here. But, you know, I know that it's a complicated issue, and there's a lot of reason for concern. And so I want to know that my government is representing this community's legitimate, I think, concerns. Again, I don't know if that's a moratorium or what it is, but I think that, I think that the important thing is that we feel a sense of trust that you actually are representing us. And, you know, at the national and other levels, we know that there's a lot of money involved. It gets, it gets hazy exactly whose interests are being represented. And I want to know that this community's interests are being represented. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Shane Schultz, followed by Debbie Baldwin, will be our last speaker.
Good evening. My name is Shane Schultz. I live at 1766 Montgomery Circle, Mr. Jamison's neighbor who spoke earlier. My wife and I are recent residents in moving to Longmont. We came down from Cheyenne, Wyoming, and as we were looking for homes, as I was going to work in our office in Denver for the company I work for, we looked everywhere from Broomfield to Erie to Longmont, and the neighborhood we found in Longmont, we loved. With all that being said, I do work in the oil and gas industry. I don't work for a company that operates in this area, but I felt compelled that I should come and at least tell the story that I'm supportive of it. I know other neighbors in my neighborhood are also supportive of our industry and make their living there. I also think that it would be good for you to hear the story of the company I work for recently drilled a well up in, near Cheyenne, Wyoming. And when we drilled that well, it was actually in the middle of an aquifer area where the city of Cheyenne gets their water supply. Before we did that, we worked very closely with Mayor Kason and the Board of Public Utilities in trying to develop the well and help them understand and making sure that all their concerns were addressed. And I applaud you for trying to take that effort here with the companies that are looking at drilling in the area. But there are success stories where companies can develop their minerals in near areas where you get your water supply, and everyone can still coexist and operations can move forward. And I just felt like you should hear that story. And if you, if you would like, I'll be happy to help give you the phone number. I'm sure you know how to get ahold of Mayor Kason or the Board of Public Utilities in Cheyenne, Wyoming. I recognize that's a state away, but they have a similar story, and I think that it worked out well for the community there as well as for the company I work for. With that being said, the company I work for has been doing business and drilling wells since 1922. You hear stories that it's an industrial wasteland. We've got leases that go back to the 20s that were still active today. We've also reclaimed some spots. And the areas where we reclaim, the only way you can find those oil and gas wells is by GPS. So there, we are, in geological time, very temporary, and we can do this in a safe and responsible manner. And I just encourage, I just wanted to come and speak and let you know that there are people in this community that do support the oil and gas industry. Thank you.
Thank you, Shane.
Hi, I'm Debbie Baldwin. I'm the environmental manager for the Oil and Gas Conservation Commission, and your staff did ask me to come here today, and I just want you to know that I'll be in the audience. And if you have any questions related to state regulation of oil and gas or other interest or anything else of interest to you or matters that you've heard people talk about, I'd be happy to answer your questions if I can.
All right. So there's no ordinances tonight for the second reading, so I guess we'll work on the consent agenda. Mayor and council, your consent agenda. Can we take a five-minute break first? Are they ready for a break? Sure. Sorry. I know we started kind of late, so I'm going to be a taskmaster tonight. So we're at the consent agenda now.
Mayor and Council?
I'll speak later.
Hey, can we please sit for seats, please? Mayor and Council, we are now ready. We're ready for the consent agenda. And item number 9A is ordinance 2012-03, a bill for an ordinance conditionally approving the Bogot annexation, generally located east of Oil County Road 1 and north of Oil County Road 26, and zoning the property A agriculture. Public hearing and second reading scheduled for January 10th. Item 9B is Resolution 2011-87. This resolution approves an intergovernmental agreement with Boulder County amending the energy conservation program. 9C is Resolution 2011-88. This resolution approves an intergovernmental agreement with the Regional Transportation District for expansion of the parking lot at 8th Avenue and Coughlin Street. 9D is Resolution 2011-89. This resolution approves intergovernmental agreement with Colorado Department of Transportation for design and construction of intersection improvements at Highway 66 and Oil County Road 1. 9E is Resolution 2011-90. This resolution approves an intergovernmental agreement with the Longmont Housing Authority for the RISE program implementation. And 9F is Adopt/Modify Rule Number 27 Regarding City Boards. And this would basically require that members of boards and commissions that move outside of the city would need to resign from their positions on boards and commissions. And Mayor, I do not need to remove any?
All right. Are there any items that the council wants to remove from the consent Mayor Protem Santos?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. If there are no members that have anything that would like to remove, I would move the consent agenda to be passed.
All right. Let's vote.
It passes unanimously, seven to zero. Mayor, next item is 11A, general business, involves a request from El Comité for funds for renovating a city-owned building. And Karen Roney will present a short bit of information and answer questions.
Good evening, Mayor Coombs and City Council. I'm Karen Roney with Community Services. And before you this evening is a request from El Comité, which resides in a city-owned building at 455 Kembarck Street. And they have resided and basically operated out of that building since the mid-1990s. So I'll just do a quick summary and open it up to questions. So we were approached by Bob Norris, who is the president of the El Comité Board of Directors, late this fall. Actually, we had a conversation earlier in the year, just really talking about the space needs for El Comité. And certainly at some point, which Bob was talking about, is that they are going to be needing to look for expanded space. They are outgrowing their operations. And the facility that they are in right now is just not meeting their needs. But that's probably going to be a waste on the road, is my understanding, as they look at some long-term planning needs. So in November, Bob Norris approached us about, could there be some opportunity for some modifications in that building? So what you have before you this evening, in attachment to the council communication, was a rough estimate of around $6,900 that El Comité believes would help to just kind of spruce the building up a little bit, as well as to help with some privacy issues that they are looking at needing and some other things. So really, Council, this is a tiny issue. So one of the things we talked to Bob about is that, given that we have already adopted our 2012 budget, that there were several different options that we could pursue. One is that, hey, if they wanted to fund all the improvements themselves, they certainly could do that. Second is that there is some uncommitted money in the general fund council contingency for 2011. If they wanted to request to possibly use that money, they could come before City Council, which is what they're doing this evening. And two other options is that certainly, we can look at the 2012 budget and work with our facility operations staff around some of the projects that we had anticipated needing to do in 2012. We might be able to modify those and just look at how we might be able to incorporate some of the improvements that they want to make in terms of painting, changing out flooring, those kinds of things. They're really pretty minor improvements. Or, we certainly could wait until the 2013 budget process and request money in that regard. So there are a variety of options. And again, I think we're here this evening primarily because the timing of that request just didn't line right up with some of the budgeting processes. And certainly, I think we believe that it's possible to make some of those improvements to that building. It's just really a case of timing and how quickly El Comité would like that done. So that really concludes my remarks. I'll be glad to try to answer any questions that you might have.
Mayor Protem Santos?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Not so much a question to you, Karen, but to Councilmember Samori. I called Councilmember Samori and saw that one of the, part of the request was partitions. And I was wondering if he had partitions over at Blinn. And he does not, but he knew of someone that might. And I was just wondering, had he heard back from those individuals?
Councilmember Samori?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I have not yet, but they may be closed for the holiday. But I know they have a ton of them available, and they have donated some in the past. And I'll work hard on getting it to them. Along that lines, have El Comité contacted any of the, like Home Depot, or Ace Hardware, or Budget Home Centers to see if they would be willing to donate any of the toilet, or paint, or carpet? They might have some scraps or remnants, I shouldn't say scraps, to where it would save them some money?
Councilmember Samori and Mayor Coombs, I am not sure if they really have had the opportunity to do that. I believe in their letter, they did indicate that they would plan to aggressively go after volunteer opportunities and any kind of donations that they could. I think the letter this evening was, this is the last regular meeting of 2011 for council. And so, if council did want to consider using some of that general fund contingency, that's why they're here. So I probably, this request came in before they really in earnest looked at soliciting donations from the community, would be my guess, if that, and Mr. Norris is shaking his head.
Councilmember Levinson?
Yes. I am, just for everybody to remind them that I've been the council liaison to the El Comité board for a number of years now. And while we don't, well, for obvious reasons, we don't hold the board meetings even at the office, because there's just not even a boardroom. There's not even a one space with a large table that could fit five, or six, or seven people around it. So we hold board meetings at a board member's business. And even that gets tight sometimes. I've had occasion recently to be in the building. And indeed, if you approach the building, there's a little bit of peeling paint on the outside. But certainly, they just want to address some basic maintenance issues. Where I know, it's kind of a building that falls between the cracks because it's not truly a city facility that could maybe go on the regular facility maintenance list, like City Hall, or the maintenance buildings, or any other building the city owns and operates. And it's a different model of operation, certainly. And as far as the partitions are concerned, I think that the kind of partitions they need are ones that you won't be able to hear conversations leaked over the top. So their full floor-to-ceiling partitions are the ones that you think you have access to?
Go ahead and answer that question quickly.
Well, they are currently being used as offices. I don't know how high their ceilings are, but where they're being used, they don't quite reach the ceiling. So it depends on the height.
And I guess my suggestion would be that, maybe, I mean, it's $6,900. They're going to provide a few thousand dollars worth of volunteer items and hours. And possibly, their volunteers, many of which have construction experience, may be able to get some donations for some of the materials. I have a full confidence that they're going to do this, it's not even renovation, it's just basic maintenance on the building, in the most cost-effective manner. And certainly, if they don't use all $6,900, they'll, I mean, they'll return whatever they don't use to the city, I imagine. So if we could do that with that agreement, then I would feel satisfied with it. Certainly, we have more on our plate than to maybe micromanage how we're trying to get solicit donations for them tonight and do it on the fly. We had the letter last week, and I think the request is quite clear. I think I have one question for staff. What kind of timeline would you, in coordination of a work plan, if option number three, with having some funds from the reprioritizing the maintenance projects from the 2012 budget, I mean, what kind of timeline are you looking on for that? And how would that distribution of resources be different than simply having the $6,900 moved from the council contingency to help El Comité with the project?
Mayor Coombs and City Council, we have had Don Webker, who's the supervisor of our facility operations, he has been meeting with El Comité and really looking at the facility and their needs and what we might be able to do. So I don't have a specific definitive answer for your question, Councilmember Levinson, but certainly, this is a doable project. So it's just really about, it's about the timing. And oftentimes, with flooring, for example, we might have extra flooring from another project that we could be able to use in this building because it is a pretty small footprint. So those would be the kinds of things that Mr. Webker would be looking at. So I know that he is looking at it now. Our interest would be to try to do what we can to replace the flooring, to do some painting, some of these things, because they are pretty minor repairs. And if I could just clarify, Councilmember Levinson, is that actually that building is on our major system replacement schedule. So in terms of HVACs, new roof, the major systems in that building, it is part of the city's assets and it is on a replacement schedule. So this is really more of the minor upkeep and maintenance that we need to address.
And when were some of those major items done, like the roof and gutters, all that kind of stuff, painting on the exterior?
This is a great question for which I could get you a follow-up, Councilmember Levinson. But I do believe that there has been, in the near past, that we did have some roof repairs at that building. And I know we did some carpet replacement sometime after El Comité moved in. But as we know, that building has a lot of traffic and it needs upgrades. So I think what we're saying to staff is that absolutely, this is a reasonable request. And I think it's really about the timing of when we can get those repairs taken care of.
And my concern would be that the alternatives, to contrast, the alternatives would be to vote the $6,900 from the council contingency fund would allow the organization to keep their operation running to plan for this, as opposed to the option number three, when they wouldn't really have all that much choice, to choose the time to readjust their day-to-day operations. their day-to-day operations and make sure that they didn't have a major disruption in their service providing is their core operation. That would be less choice, okay. I'll let others weigh in, but I would like to make the motion that we go ahead and approve $6,900 from our general fund council contingency fund to fund the improvements. Yeah.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. A couple thoughts. First of all, a question for our city manager. If we don't spend that $26,982 by January 1st, where does it go?
I take it.
Nice.
Mayor and council, in most cases, the last few years, it has been rolled over into the following year's council contingency and it's just added to what you have coming up for 2012.
All right, cool. I guess a comment, I think El Comité provides a lot of support for our Latino community members. I've been in that building and it's deplorable. If we were talking about the Chamber of Commerce, no problem, we'd fork it over. If we were talking about the library, we wouldn't be asking, well, spend the money on furniture, but we want a check, we want a receipt and a change. We just approved $146,150 for 15 families without blinking an eye. El Comité serves hundreds, if not thousands, of Latino community members. My business gets calls all the time saying, can you help this person? And it's always coming from El Comité. You take where you work, where you serve, has an impact on how you serve and how you feel. And I think that we should vote for this.
Mayor Protem Santos.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I can't agree with you more, Councilmember Bagley. The only thing I would say is that Chamber is its own organization and they wouldn't come ask us for funds. This is a city building. And the library, we did ask them to do some furniture and also make sure not to spend a whole lot of money doing it either. With Councilmember Levinson's deal, suggestion, not deal, but suggestion, is that, you know, we've been on council for four, roughly four years. Councilmember Levinson has been a great council liaison to El Comité. You know, some of us have had inquiries about being that liaison, but unfortunately, Councilmember Levinson is still there. I'm sure we're invited to meetings. Those two, yeah, went after trying, you know, to see who wanted it. But, you know, again, boards, new boards and commissions are probably good for councilmembers so we can see what is being addressed in those boards and commissions. My concern is that this is a city-owned facility. And if it's not being properly addressed in the budget process, that's wrong, as well as the firehouse. Now, the firehouse also has some issues as well. I would like to see that addressed in the 2013 budget. I, you know, I'm not trying to micromanage $6,900, Councilmember Levinson. I'm also, what I'm trying to do is also find reasonable aspects to cut down costs to the council contingency fund, especially at the end of the year. I would like to see, because what always happens is the end of the year, we get these flood of requests that come in, it's free money. No, it's not free money, it's taxpayer money. I like to see some of that money roll over to 2012. Again, not micromanaging, trying to help organizations find materials that they can possibly use, like going to the, and I know Bob Norris knows this one pretty well, the hazardous materials, I'm going to get this wrong, Dale Rademacher, the hazardous materials building that's next to EcoCycle in Boulder. They have left, they have remain, remnants of paint that is free, that you can get any, and I'll let anybody know, any resident of Boulder County can go get this paint. There's other materials there too, glue, things of that nature that, you know, constructions, people have built things that have leftovers that you can use. I would encourage them to go look at that as well. Again, kind of like what we did with Rhythm on the River a year or two ago, we approved $25,000 kind of as a credit card, knowing that not all $25,000 was going to be used. I would hope all $6,900 wouldn't be used, but if it needs to be used, great. But I would encourage El Comité to look at those, and I just talked to Bob, Bob was, and we're going to try to get as many volunteers as possible, but if there's a way that we can get some partitions from a source that Councilmember Samori knows, they can get the paint from the hazardous materials facility the Boulder County runs, great. Anything to cut down costs. But again, I'd like to see the firehouse and the El Comité building in some sort of 2013 budget process for upkeep and maintenance.
Councilmember Whit.
Thank you, Mayor. I think that I would agree with Mayor Protem Santos that we do need to incorporate this facility to make sure that the ongoing maintenance is taken care of. I, but it kind of sounds funny to say, we need to really take care of this building. But go get leftover paint from, and you can't choose the colors, you can't. So I am supportive of definitely taking care of the facility, but I don't want to say, but this facility isn't as good as any other facility that we're in charge of and so you only get second grade paint.
Councilmember Santos.
That's not exactly what I said, you know, I'm, what I'm trying to suggest is that if we're looking to be responsible for the tax dollars, whether it's this, you know, El Comité or the city of Longmont, if there's paint that needs to be had that we can use, they can use, great. If the paint matches the colors that they would like, wonderful. But, you know, again, not trying to nitpick, just trying to say, hey, there are other options and also with trying to get some partitions, I'm trying to help, I'm not trying to hinder.
Councilmember Whit.
I totally, I totally agree with you.
Okay. Shall we vote?
Let's please. We got some big stuff to announce.
It passes unanimously, seven to zero.
So Mayor, we're now ready to go to 11B, which is sort of the primary item that I think has the attention of many people in the room. And Dale Rademacher will be making a short presentation. I just wanted to summarize a couple of things that has been going on with this particular issue and it is a complex one. It has multiple jurisdictions that are involved in the regulatory process. We've actually been discussing some of the ramifications of oil and gas leasing and drilling and other issues with the city council since October. And November 15th, you had a study session devoted to it where we had a number of speakers. December 7th, we had a board and commission educational session where the same speakers and additional ones were here. And today we're back to discuss with you many of the questions that you asked that we had answers for. And hopefully we're going to be able to provide those answers for you. The interesting thing about this issue, one of the reasons it's complex is not only because you have more than one agency or jurisdiction that can regulate certain aspects of it, but the requests before you are multiple. You have a request to, or you soon may have a request to permit a consolidated site on private land where the private owners have the mineral rights. You may have a request to have a consolidated site on public lands where private property owners have the mineral rights. You have a request to lease mineral rights that currently the city owns on open space and other lands. And you also have a request to complete a seismic survey on city lands. So there are many aspects of this and they all get kind of wrapped together. So bottom line is, we're trying to give enough information to you and the public so that you can give us direction as to what additional, if any, regulations you would like for us to deal with and also to get direction as to how you want us to deal with each of those issues, specifically additional regulations and/or whether or not you're interested in the seismic survey that would need to have a contract prepared if we were going to complete it. So with that, Dale has a partial presentation and we do have two additional speakers tonight that you have not heard before.
Thank you, Gordon. Dale Rademacher, Director of Public Works and Natural Resources. I have nothing to add, no. Just real quickly, Gordon did a great job of sort of setting up some of the issues that we have to deal with, but tonight I'd like to give a brief overview of some of the information that we have put in your communication and to update you on some of the recent work and actions that the staff has been underway with. Also would like to have Brian Schumacher come up from the planning staff and take some time and talk with you a little bit about a comparison that you asked the planning staff to do of Longmont's regulations with surrounding cities and counties throughout the state. Brian is also going to talk about the surface use agreements. We put a couple of those in your packet for examples of what a surface use agreement looks like and what it can do for the city. We do have a couple, as Gordon mentioned, presentations from Mr. Wes Wilson. Mr. Wilson made a presentation at the December 7th super committee meeting. He is a retired EPA engineer and Mr. Phil Doe is the environmental issues director for an organization known as Be the Change. We also have with us tonight the city's special legal counsel, Mr. Phil Barber. I believe Phil is going to sit next to our city attorney Eugene May and be more in a position of responding to questions that the council may have with regards to legal issues. And I also do want to reiterate that Debbie Baldwin from the COGCC as well as Tisha Shuler are both here as well. They are not planning to make a presentation tonight, but are really here just in case the council does have questions, further questions for either of them. And then we want to get some question and answers with the council and the presenters and hopefully get some direction going forward on the items that Gordon mentioned. And so the next steps are going to be, as Gordon again mentioned, are, we are working on a permit for council consideration on the issue of seismic survey on city property. And just quickly on that, that has gone to a couple of your advisory boards, the Parks and Recreation Board, and yesterday it went to the Water Board. And both of those boards are recommending that if the city does go forward with permitting that action, that it be done in a very environmentally safe way. In other words, that we would restrict where the seismic truck operations can occur to existing lanes and existing public rights away, that we restrict when the cables are placed out on city property, that it be done either in walk-in or with lightweight vehicles, that we do it at a time of year that doesn't interfere with the farming and that it doesn't interfere with the wildlife. And so if we come forward and if council directs us to bring that forward, we will include those kinds of conditions in that permit for you to take a look at. We are also looking at a standard surface use agreement that we would hope to employ on all city properties where oil and gas drilling may occur in the future. And again, many of the attributes that are in some of these sample SUAs that we're putting in your packet, we would also intend to include in a, an agreement to be brought forward for your consideration. If you have any specific input or further comment that you would like us to include in that, that would be helpful. But keep in mind, when it does come to you, it'll first come to you in a draft form so you'll have an opportunity to not have to act on it immediately that night, but to give us feedback. And then at the end, if council does have any direction regarding potential revisions to the city land use code, after hearing from our planning staff tonight, that I know would be helpful to our planner staff. So with that, unless council has any questions, we do have responses in the packet to the questions that, as we understood them from council. And we do have staff here to respond to any of those questions. If you have further information that you need with response to any of those, we can certainly do that. We're not going to go through every question and answer for you tonight. But again, if there are any questions, please let us know. With that, I'll turn it over to Brian to talk with you about the land use code.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmembers, Brian Schumacher with Economic Development. So we have, still have a lot of discussion this evening, so I'm just going to try to provide a brief summary regarding the oil and gas regulations and surface use agreements, information that was included in your packet. At the November 15th meeting, council did request a somewhat simplistic comparison of the land use regulations related to oil and gas among various jurisdictions and to also try to look at some of the least and most restrictive jurisdictions with regard to regulation of oil and gas. And so this chart was in the packet, it was on the city webpage with the council packet as well. I apologize to those folks in the audience, I know it's a little bit hard to read from the seats, but I'm not planning to go into the table in a lot of detail, I just wanted to provide some summary with respect to that. Just a few disclaimers. Again, the chart attempts to provide a relative comparison of oil and gas regulations among various jurisdictions, although it's in a more simplistic format comparison. And if the intent there is to address whether a jurisdiction's regulations address particular standards or not, or processes or not. Again, it doesn't go into a lot of detail regarding how a particular standard is or is not addressed. Obviously that would require a much larger chart, it'd be even harder to read. And then in addition to this comparison chart, there's also a link in your packet on page 152 that is a link to a comparison study that was conducted by the University of Colorado Natural Resources Law Center. And that provides a lot of good information regarding analysis on best management practices regarding other municipalities and counties in terms of what their regulations do or do not include. So that's helpful information that council may want to look at as well. So what we found is that there's a lot of variation among jurisdictions. It depends on whether or not there's, to some extent, whether or not there's oil and gas development pressure in an area. For example, we talked to Loveland and looked at their regulations and they really don't address oil and gas at this time in their zoning code. They just, to date, they haven't had a lot of inquiries or applications for oil and gas exploration. So they may have to address that in not too distant future. When we looked at Weld County and talked to the Weld County staff, oil and gas production is a use by right in the Ag Zoning District, but in the other, some of their other zoning districts, it's a special use review, which requires a hearing process. Weld County does have some standards that are applicable to oil and gas developments and some setback requirements, but in general, most of their standards are typically, they abide by the rules and regulations that are part of the Colorado Oil and Gas Conservation In terms of what's most restrictive, based upon our review and discussions with our legal counsel, Mr. Barber, some of the county regulations such as La Plata, Gunnison, Sagwatch are considered to have some of the more restrictive oil and gas regulations in the state. And some of those have been more recently adopted than what the city of Longmont's regulations are currently in place. From a zoning standpoint, in terms of locations of where oil and gas drilling is allowed, as noted in the communication, Longmont's regulations currently allow oil and gas exploration and drilling in all zoning districts as a conditional use process except for the mixed use district. And the exception there was that on the mixed use And the exception there was that, on the mixed use district, was that that was initially intended to be in already developed areas within the city's central core along Main Street and other areas where the built environment would allow additional drilling operations. Also as noted in your communication, other jurisdictions such as El Paso, Douglas, and Arapaho Counties are currently in the process of updating their regulations. We did provide a copy of draft regulations from El Paso County in the packet, so you could take a look at those and compare those with the current Longmont regulations. Some of the examples of distinctions that El Paso is looking at compared to our regulations are opportunities for potentially greater setbacks of structures and other facilities from oil and gas wells, requirements for use of closed loop systems. And then they have a number of standards regarding water quality assessment, monitoring, and mitigation in their draft regulations. So with respect to some of the findings in terms of our review of our regulations and other regulations of jurisdictions is that our regulations have been in place since 2000 and they were modeled at the time after other municipalities, Thornton in particular, the regulations that they had in place at the time. And while our regulations do require a public hearing process for any new well permits and drilling operations, and they also cover a number of standards that help to address potential impacts, we felt they're currently not to the extent, obviously, and to the detail and as some of the other jurisdictions' regulations are that have been most recently adopted or are under consideration for adoption. So I'm sure Mr. Barber can maybe provide a little more detail, but we did have a little chat about kind of a relative assessment on a kind of a one to 10 scale of where our regulations fit within other regulations in the state. And we're kind of a little bit below the midpoint on a relative scale, maybe a three or four score out of 10 in terms of where our regulations sit. I know council also had requested some information regarding ordinances on noise, light, and odor standards. Our current regulations under the oil and gas section do address noise to some extent. There is an exemption for drilling operations, they are exempt from our noise standards, but other facets of oil and gas operations would be required to comply with our daytime and nighttime noise standards. Lighting and odor standards are not specifically addressed under the oil and gas sections, but they are citywide standards. And there aren't currently anything specifically listed as exceptions for oil and gas operations under our lighting or odor standards. So we would have to take a look at that in terms of how a oil and gas drilling operation might or might not be able to comply with our lighting standards in particular. And there would be a process, there could be a process to go through in terms of a variance process as part of the conditional use review to take a look at that, those lighting standards. And then regarding odor standards, again, I've mentioned those are applicable citywide and the provisions allow for the use of best available treatment, maintenance, and control technologies to maintain the lowest odor emissions possible. That's kind of verbatim out of our current code standards. With respect to surface use agreements, I know council had asked for an example or examples of some surface use agreements, and we provided three examples. The first being a private surface use agreement between Hewlett Packard and a drilling operator. And the first one, the first couple are fairly simplistic in a relative sense compared to the third example. The Hewlett Packard example includes a fee based on production for the use of the land and it also specifies that the operator is responsible for specific damages that may occur on the property. The second example is an earlier version that Boulder County used on their open space property. And again, that includes a surface use damage payment and it also specifies some site-specific performance standards. But again, those are somewhat limited in comparison to their more recent standard surface use agreement. The third example is the standard surface use agreement that Boulder County is currently using on their open space properties. And it includes more detail than the previous two examples that I mentioned that are in your packet. It also requires the oil and gas development to be consistent with their, the county's open space objectives in terms of well placements and setbacks and other criteria. It specifies locational criteria, pipeline and access requirements, reclamation requirements, surface damage payments, operation maintenance, and other standards that are considered to be best management practices. As Dale mentioned, we are in the process of developing an agreement that the city intends to use on our open space and other city-owned properties. And that agreement that we were working on will be more in line with the current Boulder County standard agreement, but it'll go into more detail than that standard that you have in your packet. And hopefully it'll address potential impacts associated with oil and gas development. Some of the examples that we're looking at including our water quality monitoring, produced water and waste disposal, closed loop system requirements, and some financial security requirements that we currently don't have in our oil and gas regulations. I did want to mention that while the surface use agreement that we are currently working on will help address potential impacts on city-owned properties that currently aren't addressed in our oil and gas regulations, any proposed drilling that might occur on, or proposed or might occur on privately-owned property such as the Ryder site would not be subject to a surface use agreement since top operating would be both the surface owner as well as the drilling operator on that property. So that concludes my brief remarks. I'm supposed to introduce Mr. Wilson next to come up and make some remarks for city council, unless you have some questions.
Councilmember Levinson.
Yes, Brian, before we bring up the next speaker, since we've already heard the difficulties with Engle Homes and their issues with top operating and trying to remediate the operation there, could we see what Engle's Homes' surface agreement would look like? Because obviously, whatever they had for a surface agreement didn't seem to work. So if it's going to incorporate the same kind of things that you're suggesting here, you know, can there be, you know, can we build a better mousetrap? And if all these surface, I mean, especially at the case of Engle Homes, you know, if that one failed to really protect that surface owner, we should be making sure we write one that will protect the surface owner.
Mayor and Councilman Levinson, with respect to the Ryder well, I'm quite certain that that well was in place prior to Engle Homes acquiring the property. It was owned by the Ryder family, the property, and I do not know if there was a surface use agreement between the Ryder family and the original company that drilled on the property for the Ryder well.
But you think a smart developer building massive quantities of homes like Engle, you know, they're smart business people, you know, they're in the money to make, you know, in the business to build homes, make money for their company, you know, provide some community development for our city. So you'd think that they would have a, you know, at least something that would have protected their interests to a degree that they would not lose value in their investment. So I'd kind of like to look at, I don't know if Engle Homes would be, you know, if that's proprietary or if they could let staff take a look at it and see how it stacks up to these, but I'd sort of like to be able to take a look at it too. Because if it failed to protect them or if they inherited something that they were comfortable enough in the past, I'd like to hear their opinion certainly because I see they might have lost a great deal in their investment of that surface right there.
You know, I will say that when that property, the Ryder property, was annexed, that well was in existence at the time. As part of the annexation agreement, there was a requirement that on that vacant parcel that's currently there, that's owned now by top operating, that before any new development could occur in that vacant parcel, that the well had to be capped and abandoned. I believe that's the language that was in the annexation agreement.
Councilmember Finley.
Thank you Mayor Coombs. I have some questions, but I'm only going to ask you one at this time. I understand that Broomfield has recently redone their land use codes surrounding oil and gas. Did you take a look at those?
Bear with me for a second. They're in the table. I didn't look at those personally, we had several staff kind of doing some research to put together this analysis, but we'd be happy to take a look at that and provide more information to the council if you'd like to have that information certainly.
Councilmember Bagley.
Thank you Mayor Coombs. Couple of questions. I know where the Ryder well is located, but is it located within city limits?
Yes, it is.
And then how do we learn about the benzene spill? Or how did we learn about the contamination? How did it first come about?
Mayor Coombs and Councilmember Bagley, I learned about it the same time council did with regards to the report from Mr. Porzak. Probably said your name wrong again, but Porzak. So when he brought forward that information, I don't, I was not notified by the Oil and Gas Commission that there was an ongoing remediation, nor by the operator.
All right, and then out there, my understanding is that it's a hodgepodge, so to speak, a checkerboard. Where, I mean, that particular location is next to Boulder County, and then right across County Road 1 is Weld County, and then just a couple hundred yards away is Firestone. And you have different municipalities, jurisdictions, et cetera. Are we more or less likely to discover and regulate and keep a lid on top if it's on city property or within city Longmont, or if it's in Boulder, Weld, or Firestone? Do we, I guess what I'm asking is, if right now there's drills going in literally feet away from our city, do we have any authority jurisdiction whatsoever in order to be able to monitor those wells, keep tabs on them, make sure that they're not impacting this?
Mayor, if they're outside of our jurisdiction, we would not have anything to say about it. The only thing that we could say is that in most cases, they'll be on the periphery and there's only so much that can come and impact our community on the periphery versus within the middle of our community or more inside of our boundaries.
All right, so I guess my next question is, there was a well fracked this summer at Union on the Bogot property. There's going to be a well fracked 100 yards outside Longmont on 119 at the end of December. Does Firestone, do these other municipalities or jurisdictions coordinate, say, hey, heads up Longmont, we're 40 miles away, we're 10 miles away, but you're right there at ground zero, we're doing this. Do you guys want input? Or do they kind of just do whatever the heck they want or need to?
Well Mayor, we do have a new governmental agreement with Firestone and Frederick where they certainly, it would be within those agreements to notify us that there is activity going on and give us an opportunity to comment. And I can't say whether or not we actually received any such comment referral from Firestone on the property that you're talking about, just east of our boundary.
So we weren't necessarily notified that there was going to be fracking done at the end of this month on 119 in Fairview?
I am not aware that we were notified, but the planning department may have known about it and there is no unguly guarantee in our IGA that any jurisdiction is actually going to remember to do it, but it's our general understanding with each other that we will refer within a mile of our boundaries.
It was weird as it may sound, if we're scared of fracking and want to make sure that we're on top of it, the only way we could do it is if Longmont insisted that it happened in Longmont. Weird, but okay, thanks.
Councilmember Santos.
Thank you Mayor Coombs. Question keeps coming up. The Ryder well, who owns the property the Ryder wells are?
Mayor and Councilman Santos, the surface owner is top operating.
Okay. And what is leaking? Is it the well itself or the pit? I'm asking these questions for clarification for the general audience here and the, you know, the audience watching on television, because I know the answers to these questions.
Mayor Coombs and Mayor Fratim Santos, I'll offer an answer and I'd also refer possibly over to Debbie Baldwin from the COGCC. But as I understand it, there are two potential sources of petroleum contamination at the Ryder site. The first is from the prior fracking of the well back in the early 80s when they had an open pit, which was the typical protocol and procedure that was used at the time. I believe some of the testing has indicated that that could be a source. It certainly was a source in the past. There was a remediation effort that top operating conducted back in the mid 1990s to attempt to remediate that situation. But given where some of the wells or the test holes are being drilled, namely in the test pit, it appears as though that could be a source. The second source that was identified by the CTO report that was completed for Engle Homes back in 2006 identified a potential source near the separator facilities, not from the well itself, but from the separators. Again, the test hole was drilled in the vicinity of those facilities and they identified that and the flow lines as a potential source of additional leakage that may have occurred at the site.
Okay.
And if I've misstated any of that, if Debbie has a more accurate recollection of that or information, I'd certainly defer.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Levinson.
Thank you Mayor. Before you call on me a second time, I just want to check in with other council members that haven't had an opportunity to speak if they'd like to speak.
I have one question. Let's say, as a planner, we gave you tomorrow what we wanted for tougher regulations, you know, basically ironclad, this is what we want. How long does it take you then to write all these things up and then the process to go through council and get those new regulations actually to become law? What's the longest period you could, or reasonable amount?
Well, you know, we'd want to do some additional comparison of other jurisdictions. We'd want to confer obviously with our legal counsel to make sure that what we're putting together is defensible. And then I believe since it's in our land development code, we want to take it to our plan and zoning commission, have it reviewed by them before we bring it back to city council for review. So I'm thinking drafting the regulations themselves would probably take at least two to three months, and then we'd have to go through a hearing process with plan and zoning commission and city council.
And Mayor, I'd only add that when Brian talks about that two to three months, it would, that time would involve the boards and commissions that we brought together here on December 7th because the council very deliberately brought all those boards and commissions into this process by saying you wanted them educated enough so that they could give you good advice. And so I think that in this case, it would be more than P and Z, it would be those three boards and commissions that came. And so that would be part of that three month period.
Thank you.
Councilmember Levinson. Oh, excuse me. Councilmember Whit.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Councilmember Levinson. I do also have a question. When we're talking about enforcement, and what's been said by members of the public is that, you know, our, although we may have the toughest rules in the nation, they're not being enforced. Now, if we are, if we overlay that with our own set of regulations, it is my understanding that we would enforce them, correct?
Our, our standards and rules, the city would enforce those.
Okay. And what is the procedure, and we might not have this fleshed out yet, but would they go to municipal court then if they violate our, our city rules?
Typically, there's a notice of violation that's sent out to the, to the operator, and they're given a certain period of time to come into compliance. And if they do not come into compliance, then there's the opportunity to take them to municipal court.
Okay. And one thing that I am interested in hearing as you go forward is enforcement from the state level, and I've heard people be questioning that, and I would like to just have some statistics on, on how often these things are being enforced or not enforced. You know, just give me rough estimate. Thank you.
Councilmember Levinson.
Thank, thank you, Mayor. I, I don't see anybody here from our water department, so if you can get this information back to me, I'd, I'd like to, just Dale. Well, sorry, Dale. You know, I, I'm looking for Cal. I'm looking, I'm looking for, for Cal Youngberg. But I know that under our Phase 2 designation for, under the regulatory permitting authority we get from the state under Phase 2 cities, Phase 2 specifically talks about regulations of disturbance of less than five acres. And there's not that much regulation for disturbance of less than five acres. When you're having an intensive industrial use, is there any additional regulation out there that EPA has for industrial uses and land disturbances under five acres? And if not, could the city of Longmont draft some regulation in a general industrial use category so that we have some right to stand on? Because otherwise, under Phase 2 regulation permitting, you know, we only do what the state allows us to do under that, that permitting requirement. So I just wanted to know in general, is there another area of regulation we have overlooked?
Mayor Coombs and, and Councilmember Levinson, Cal is the right person to look for, but I, I believe I have an answer on that. You know, the city's MS4 regulations on stormwater do allow us to be in the regulatory role. We would issue a permit, and they would need to comply with our stormwater regulations for oil and gas development. And I have discussed this with Cal, so we're confident that that would fall under our regulations, and that we would enforce those just as we would any other activity that is disturbing the soil, and therefore potentially causing sediment loading or, or those types of, or spills. Certainly, if there's any chemicals or spills on the, on the surface, those would also be regulated. If you'd like more detailed information, I can certainly get that in a packet so that you can review that, though.
And I'm just looking, you know, BMPs, best management practices, are only BMPs when they work. Once they fail, they're no longer BMP. And when you're, I mean, there's, there's one thing as far as the, the level of damage possibly, when you might have some sedimentation coming off a construction site where it might be muddy, and trucks coming in and out of a site have a lot of mud stuck to their tires. There's another level when you're looking at people washing down equipment, maybe improperly. But again, once a, the level of environmental damage or mitigation increases with certain types of uses. So, you know, whether, it might be less stringent for something coming, a truck coming off a construction site onto a road, and that sediment, you know, coming off, mud coming off a truck, and then washing down in the next rainfall. However, it's different when there might already be contaminated soil on a site, then those, in the mud, the truck tires pick it up, take it into a county road, and somehow it gets into the storm sewer system. And, you know, I don't know whether or not, again, because the regulatory permitting doesn't have much regulation under five acres of disturbance, you know, where are we when we could possibly, you know, have a spill and, you know, mud and, and soil being taken off-site and then entering the stormwater system? And, and how, we don't treat stormwater either, do we, in our treatment plant?
Mayor Coombs and Councilmember Levinson, I'll respond to the last one first. You're correct, we don't, stormwater does not go to the wastewater plant, that's only sanitary sewer. We do, however, try to employ best management practices at the outfalls of our storm sewer systems as it enters into the river. It's typically through wetlands and, and onsite treatment as opposed to chemical treatment or more mechanical treatment. I'd also say that our stormwater regulations do allow us to take enforcement action against a wide range of spills, whether that be a, a, a truck that has a chemical spill along the highway, or in this case, oil and gas operation that has a spill at, at their site. So I believe as, as new sites are permitted through the city's process, that, that those regulations would be enforced, and I do believe that it would have to be consistent also with the state regulations. I don't think we can preempt the state's regulations either. But if you'd like more, more detail on any of that, we, again, we can certainly research that as we're looking at the overall codes and make sure that we're comfortable that those codes are adequate.
But once something leaves the site, unless it's on city, a city maintained road or highway, somebody could be following a truck that's leaking a fluid down 119, and once outside of our jurisdiction, you know, there's very little way we're going to be able to catch up with that person. And, I mean, basically, if the tree falls in the forest, if you're not there to witness it, you know, no one knows the tree fell. So how do we, how would we actually be able to trace anything had there, had there been, I mean, it, it just seems that, you know, there's very little sometimes the city would have the ability to do unless someone happened to be there and witness something, and then be able to have an adequate follow-up. So I, I'm just wondering about those, those Phase 2 regulations, and I haven't read them in a while, so it might just be my responsibility to sit down and read, read all the Phase 2 permit regulations again. But, but those kinda questions. And, and sorry, you know, Cal has schooled me many years ago, six or seven years ago, he began schooling me. So that's why I'm not doubting your expertise, but, but Cal was my first teacher. Thank you.
Councilmember Finley.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. One of the biggest questions I have is, when we have two attorneys, we have numerous people with advanced degrees, we have examples of new codes that have been written across the state, why in the world would it take so long to update our code?
Is that a question for me?
Mayor, maybe I can answer it in, in general terms. For, for one thing, having, if we get direction that we are to change our code and do it in a way that is responsible to meet what your direction is, then we need to do the necessary research and really start narrowing it down and really zeroing in on what you tell us to do. And that does take research time. We also then need to make sure that we take it to our various boards and commissions, and they have their chance to weigh in on it, because we've invited them in, and that's why you have the advisory boards. They then make their comments, and it goes back to the attorneys, in case they have suggestions to change or modify, and then that needs to have that secondary review. And then by the time it goes to the P and Z commission, and then through a public hearing and all those type things, and then back to you, they're, they're probably very close to saying it's gonna take two, three months in order to have that process done with the public engagement that we pride ourselves of doing when we're making these changes.
Councilmember Bagley.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I heard a couple comments that were disturbing, and I just wanna clarify. So if an oil company owns the surface, is there anything that we're talking about that would impact them? Or are they only controlled by the state regs? Meaning, if I, I mean, if, if top operating owns the Ryder well site, there's nothing that we're talking about now that would control them at all?
Mayor and Councilman Bagley, they would still have to go through our process, conditional use site plan process, and comply with our current regulations that we have.
All right, and if we had new regs, they'd have to comply with those?
That is correct.
Okay, so buying property necessarily doesn't get around it. And then, this is for you, Mr. Barber, and you, Mr. May. To what extent, I mean, if you've got the state regs that I'm hearing tonight, or the strictest or most stringent in the country, is there any way to heighten or increase them? Or are we limited? And under what, what conditions can we?
I'll be, I'll be general, because there is not a whole lot of guidance from the Colorado Supreme Court or the Court of Appeals, which is ultimately where a dispute would be resolved. But the, the guidance is that there are a few areas where you absolutely cannot impede or weigh in. Those tend to be things like setback requirements, location of a well, if the state permits that a well can be at a particular location. The court cases indicate that you would not have authority to change that. But there are things like water monitoring, roads, emergency plans, financial guarantees, fees, what kind of reclamation system would be used in conjunction with any hydraulic fracturing. I think it is a, I say this in all sincerity, this is an area where there are gonna be a lot of new things coming up, both in terms of the technology and in terms of the legal parameters. We, we don't know all the answers a, as lawyers, I can tell you that right now.
Okay. And then I guess the, yeah, okay, I'll reserve a comment for later. Thanks.
All right, no other questions? Thank you, Brian.
Thank you. Mr. Wilson will be up next.
Well, thank you, Mayor, and members of city council, public. I'm Wes Wilson. I worked 35 years for the Environmental Protection Agency, and retired last year, and have been reviewing the oil and gas industry for some time. And what I wanna present tonight is just some of the false presumptions that come along with this industrial development, this large-scale industrial development. Get the right one? Part, part of your general education is to understand the industry has changed considerably. Look at this generalized geologic drawing underground. You see this little conventional gas thing there, and it talks about a trap underground. Previously, the industry was after these traps, where they would find gas, oil, water. And when they found produced water in those locations, they reintroduced it into the same trap in order to keep their pressure formations up. What's happening now is fundamentally different. The industry is now after what's the Geological Survey calls unconventional gas. It means gas that is not in a trap, but gas is in the rock where it originally formed. And that has consequences for us, because virtually any place that was under the sea in the past is now suitable for potential drilling. And because they're after formations that are ubiquitous and widespread, there's gonna be rarely a dry well. And what we've seen from the industry is a rush, a black gold rush, to get oil out of the Niobrara Formation, which is under our feet here. In fact, we're not sure where the industry will stop when it moves towards the mountains, because the resource goes all the way to the mountains. This is a, a brief schematic map of that Niobrara shale. You see, it comes right along the, the Weld County, Boulder County line, in, in terms of this drawing, but the resource does continue further west. As a result, we've seen up to 8,000 different leases across the Front Range issued just this year, private leases, because the industry's so sure of its vet to get new oil by this new technology. So let's, let's talk about some of these myths. One of the myths that the industry would like, and I think was mentioned today, is that this 60-year-old technology, and it's safe and it's proven. That's not correct. I mean, this high-volume slick water fracking using horizontal well technology and multi-wells from one pad is like five or six years old. It's a large industrial process. It's nothing like your grandfather's well. And there's virtually no scientific information. The jury is still out on whether this is safe. And I saw this well debated between oil and gas commissioner Alred, Richard Alred, and Representative Halliburton just several weeks ago, in front of the commission's hearing about whether the commission would require companies to disclose what they're using. Mr. Alred was making the same point. We have survey information, but we don't have what we call first principle science to understand whether this technology's safe. And there's, there's two big reasons for that. First of all, and the industry will agree with this, that we know that bad wells and spills are a problem. You, you've heard about bad wells or, or bad pit construction, just in terms of this Ryder case. I used another case in Weld County, the case of Norm Anderson, who found his well was contaminated with tylenol. He's a private resident up near Gardner in Weld County. In June of 2009, he found his water was contaminated. Subsequently in that year, the oil and gas commission not only ruled that his well was contaminated by the industry, they found they had made a fundamental error in their rules. And they issued what I call a kind of a hail mary type of oversight of that. They said that within a 25, the oil and gas commission ordered companies to go back and retest their wells and see if they were leaking. If they were leaking, the obligation of the industry was to do what they call a re-cement, a re-squeeze job, a kind of a hail mary pass to try to control what was leaking underground. Now, that area that the state did require such an order stops right here at the Weld County, Boulder County line. We certainly have heard tonight about leaking pits. And now, we understand, or we will understand, once the chemistry is reported to us citizens next April, what, what chemistry is in these pits. We don't yet know that, but we know somewhat about the industry, because other states have reported, Wyoming, for instance, requires fracking materials to be reported. And produced fluids mismanagement is really a big topic for you to, to focus on. You know, the state has rules of this produced water, if it drives at a well, is to be injected properly at disposal well, if it arrives at a large industrial facility where it's evaporated, it's supposed to be handled by line pits. But it's not clear that all of these waste products make it there. The Department of Energy put, put out a report focusing on this. They said one gap in the regulatory process by states is manifesting the wastes that go from the well drilling to its ultimate disposal. Recall that this industry is exempt from many of the national environmental statutes, including hazardous waste law with respect to toxic materials that are produced during drilling. So we have bad wells. What we don't know is whether even good wells cause a problem, whether they, a pathway can be allowed from the fracking zone to near surface or to wells completed in usable aquifers up from the well. Now, EPA just reported last week on Pavilion, there's some indication that that may have occurred in that particular geologic setting. EPA is doing a national study to look at this, and, but their results won't be out till 2014. We know that the air pathways are particularly a systemic risk. How does the industry get rid of its volatile or hazardous air products? It evaporates them. It counts on our good sunshine and lack of, of rain to get in that evaporation. It works every year. And many of these toxic components don't have an odor. So an odor standard isn't gonna be suitable for picking up whether there's hazardous air pollutants. air pollutants coming off a pit or a condensate tank. Now, EPA is moving to close this rule. EPA, for the first time, is stepping up and saying, we may close this rule next February. We need to stay focused and see that EPA follows up on that rule. It's intriguing that EPA defends its rule by saying, the industry will actually capture more methane and sell it, or profit, to pay for these additional costs. It's called closed loops of green completion. Colorado has such a rule, you would be foolhardy not to insist that that applies if drilling does occur here, green completions. Now finally, this last part about VOCs condensing on particulates and, and coming down to the ecosystem hasn't been studied. It's just another example of we don't have the first principle science to understand the risk of this industry yet. With respect to the natural gas that's, will be completed, we know there's some problems in, in the claim that natural gas will help us bridges to a, to a cleaner future. While burning natural gas has less sulfur oxides and nitric oxides in particulates, wells leak. Enough leaky.
Can I ask a quick question?
Thank you, Mayor. What's VOC stand for?
Oh, I'm sorry. Volatile organic compounds. It means organic compounds that evaporate at standard temperature and pressure. So, I mean, that's the big picture look. If you look at natural gas production worldwide, there's so much leakage that we actually don't benefit by replacing coal with natural gas, because methane traps more heat. There's a myth that fluid migrations from faulty wells is rare. You know, when we heard from representatives of the Oil and Gas Commission and the Colorado Gas Association, we heard a lot about the rules. But we didn't hear about mistakes. I use the analogy that we're going to hear about the red light set up so that most citizens stop at the red light. Of course, the citizens are concerned not about those who stop it, but by those who make a mistake and go through a rule or violate a rule. Simply put, fluid migration is not rare. There was a Canadian researcher came out this spring that looked at 250,000 wells and had found 12% had leakage around their annulus part of the well. EPA found benzene tylenine and some of these glycol's and esters that are, that are not biodegradable in the, in the fracking, as a result of fracking in underground conditions in Pavilion, Wyoming. And as I mentioned, right here, Colorado Oil and Gas Report, when, when they say, look at some of their science, which is actually survey data, they had a report on Laramie-Fox Hill Aquifer, but they found that 36%, that's, that's right here, this was done in, in Weld County, in, in, near the Wattenberg Field, in the Wattenberg Field. And they found 36% of those wells had some gas leakage as well. All of the nine domestic wells they tested in that report had biogenic gas, which the state concluded was not related to the industry. Even Oil and Gas Commission's document called Correcting Gas Land, it's a myth that it actually refutes many of the Colorado cases. In that film, you see Amy Ellsworth talking about her contamination of thermogenic gas within her well. Indeed, this very document affirms that her well was contaminated by the industry. The same was true in Garfield County, when they had Lisa Bracken on the film. This document says that just 1,500 feet away, thermogenic gas came to the surface as a result of the industry's faulty well. The state claims that their data shows no groundwater contamination. Well, the problem is, is not so much that, that what they're reporting is okay, but they're using domestic wells. Domestic wells don't represent a good process for scientific evaluation because they have homeowner maintenance, or they may not be located where that driller said they were or screened in, in a particular location. And mostly, I have this problem with how the Oil and Gas Commission works. They don't determine the cause often. In that case of Amy Ellsworth, no cause was determined. Now, she later made a settlement with the industry, but we didn't understand the cause. You can't blame the industry for going out defending itself, that it's not its fault. The problem is with the state commission not having the seriousness to really get at the cause of some of these deeper groundwater contamination events. And then worse for those of us in, in the public arena trying to understand this, if the industry is at fault, often that landowner signs an agreement, because they've been adversely affected, with a non-disclosure agreement, a secrecy agreement preventing further analysis of what's happening at that location. Let's get into what you've been talking about. I think it's a myth that cities and counties are preempted by, from regulating oil and gas. I provided to Mr. Barber his request, a pivotal paper on this, by Attorney Steve Baumgartner, who's working those more aggressive regs in Gunnison County, and a, and a co-author of his, Jeffrey Robbins. Particularly, what I understand as a non-lawyer, that this, this case law could come boiled down to that as long as your rules don't materially, aren't materially different and can be harmonized with the state rules. So I put down some suggestions here for how, what you might do if you're interested. Certainly, the setback distance concerns a lot of communities. The 350 setback distance of a well from the nearest residence within an urban area is simply a fire hazard rule set by the state. If you want something larger, as Gunnison County is trying to achieve, I think you can couch those additional rules in public health and safety and make them not materially different. You can obligate cleanup to pre-existing conditions. That's not something the state requires. What we were hearing for this morning about the Ryder well having groundwater contamination and concentrations well above EPA standard, you could require a more stringent standard, wouldn't interfere with drilling at all. You can certainly require these closed-loop systems, these green completions. I'd be shocked if that didn't occur here, because we're in a non-attainment area with respect to ozone, those are going to have to be controlled. I do think that you can do benign fluids. I don't see how this materially interferes with drilling. Grand Junction and Palisades were able to negotiate with their driller to use benign fluids. You can look at that case and how they arrived at that mutual agreement. Halliburton officials have been fond of going around this country and at various conferences, holding up their new frac fluids that are principally from food additives and, and drinking them. Literally. Fine, you could say, if you can drink them, you can use them. And this will cut down particularly on the risk of undiluted spills of some of these complex and toxic chemicals. Finally, and I heard staff mention this, it's clearly within your purview to do groundwater monitoring. Have the industry prove what they say? They're saying they're not contaminating groundwater? Then at each major pad, I encourage you to put a groundwater well requirement in, one up gradient, two down gradient, and check in the uppermost aquifer that they've protected it as they're obligated to do. Let me finish with this. It's even a myth that you cannot stop this. Now, I know when I presented this a couple of weeks ago, the city attorney was quite upset with this. Because, but what we're suggesting here is seeking new case law. Colorado homeowners simply have the authority under the state's constitution to restrict industrial activity. You've got to recognize that neither a property right nor a contract right is absolute. The very meaning of government is to make sure that your neighbor uses their land not to the detriment of you. Pittsburgh has done this ban. So we have 140 communities in Pennsylvania and New York, of some few community leaders here in Colorado are considering it. But let me say, I recognize, in discussion with your attorney, we understand the Voss case, we under, we recognize that case law is not supportive of this. We're looking for new case law. If it wasn't new case law, black people would still be owned. Native Americans would still be enemies. Separate would still be equal. So I invite you to consider all that and, and look, as your staff has, has indicated here, they're going to catch up to this game that they feel they're behind now. Take that three to six months, they can develop additional rules. And let me say this about surface use agreements. Even those have some pitfalls in front of you. The Colorado Oil and Gas Commission has a procedure that if the surface owner cannot come to an agreement with the mineral estate, the driller can bond out with the state and drill under their, their conditions. Look at the example of Lowry Bombing Range. It is a location of a former defense site, but turned over to the state land board. The state land board had the intention, I hear, of, like you're doing, where you own open space and still have the mineral right, you would like to make it environmentally benign. That was attempted there, but Oil and Gas Commission put sufficient pressure on the land board, they essentially defaulted to these statewide rules. I know you have a complex draw ahead of you. I wish you time and opportunity to study these complex issues, and you can't do that unless you have a moratorium to get a breather space. Thank you. I'll take any questions?
No questions. Thank you very much, Mr. Wilson.
It's a long way back to Denver. My name's Philip Doe. I too was a federal employee. I was in charge of the water policy staff for the Bureau of Reclamation, among other things. I'm not very good with this. But before I start, I usually try and give people some idea of how I feel about water. And I often do that by quoting Lauren Isley, the anthropologist and that naturalist. He said, if there's any mystery in this world, the mystery's in water. And I agree with him. When I take my grandchildren to the beach, I understand exactly what he meant. It's almost transformative for them. It's almost mystical. That's as spiritual as I get, folks, but I will talk about scarcity. Water is the scariest product on the earth. We see it everywhere, but very, very little of it is useful to us. Less than 3% can be drunk or can raise crops, used to raise crops. Less than 3%. Of that 3%, 70% is contained in the glaciers of Antarctica and Greenland. So what was really usable to us is less than 1%. Now, you would think that that would give us a sense of guarding that very rarest of resources. Let me show you what we're going to do with it here in Colorado, if I can operate this. Which one do I?
The right button?
The right button? Oh, there we go. This is a, this is a chart of what it will take to frac one well, one horizontal well. I've got two comparisons up there, but for, for this evening, because it's so late and we're going to use the Oil and Gas Association's figures. They say it takes 5 million gallons to frac one well. Now, understand, this is over several stages, from 10 to 18 stages. So it's probably 500,000 per stage, and we're using 10 stages. So we come up with 5 million gallons. Truck loads is 2,000 round trips, 1,000 in, 1,000 out, because of the weight limits, 80,000 pounds. Refracs, now that's, that's where we start parting company with what we're being told by the association. We know from what goes on in Texas that these wells are refracked, and they refract regularly, and the water required to refract them is at least equal to the first frac, if not greater, because they have to open wider the fractures or run them deeper. So if they do that on a three-year running basis, that's another six times in a 20-year period, so that's another 30 million gallons. That comes out on an annualized basis as 6 million gallons. That's enough water for 60 people. The annual domestic needs of 60 people. This is one well. And, and we're being told that this is insignificant? Well, how big is this going to look like? We have to back into this because we don't know. But I can tell you this, a lot of acreage has been leased to the oil and gas industry while we were having dinner. State land, 700,000 acres. Federal land, 4.8 million acres. If you take these together, this land area is larger than Massachusetts, it's larger than Rhode Island, it's larger than Connecticut, it's larger than Delaware, it's larger than Hawaii, and what have we done about this? This huge transfer of public wealth into the hands of the oil and gas industry? Absolutely nothing. And nothing is planned, as far as the eye can see. The number of wells, well, here again, it's a kind of a difficult thing. But we're looking at probably eight wells per square mile. And I've given you the square miles in, in play here already. And this is only the start. This is only the start. So you can, at, at the state level, you could be looking at 8,800 wells. At the federal, on the federal land, you could be looking at 64,000 wells. We have no idea how many wells there are going to be on private land, because nobody's tracking how much land has been leased to the oil and gas industry. I mean, there's this huge void there in information, and nobody seems to be alarmed by this, except Well, here are the water requirements. And here again, these are speculative. If the total on the federal and state land is 72,000 wells, then you come up with 2.5 trillion gallons, based on a $5 million, or a 5 million gallon for one well, and 30 million for the refracs. These are the numbers you start to get. Annualized, over 20 years, that comes out to 385,000 acre-feet a year, for each and every year in the next 20 years, with no further build-out, no more leases, and it doesn't include the private property. That should, that should startle people. It startles me. You know how much Denver uses annually? 264,000 acre-feet. I think Longmont uses somewhere in the neighborhood of 40,000 acre-feet, if I read your C.H. Twum Hill report correctly. So even without accounting for private land, the oil and gas industry is going to need more than the water requirements of Denver and Longmont combined, in each and every year, for as far as, as far as we can see. Well, to me, it's pretty startling. You know, there's a, there's, Erasmus once said that in the land of the blind, the one-eyed, one-eyed man is king. And I'll tell you, the people I work for, be the change, we're looking for that one-eyed man at the state level. We're having a hard time finding him, I'll tell you. But we really do need to sit down and collectively, as citizens of this state, look at what's happening to our natural resources, in terms of our land use, our water use, our air. And it's, it's, it's the sociable thing to do. And it's the only reasonable thing to do for our children and our grandchildren. Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Doe. Councilmember Santos?
Thank you, Mayor Combs. Dale, you had an awkward look on your face when it was mentioned that we use 40,000 acre-feet. What is it? What's the number?
Mayor Combs and Mayor Portem Santos, I shouldn't be in a poker game. But no, the city of Longmont uses about 18,000 acre-feet a year. At full build-out, we're anticipating to use about 32,000 acre-feet.
So Mayor, Council, that's the last of the presentations, and so now, we're here to answer questions from whomever they may come, and then we will try to get direction from you as to where we go from here. All right. Councilmember Santos?
Thank you, Mayor Combs. You know, we heard from a lot of people this evening. I guess the notion is, as Mr. Whiteley suggested, that we can regulate. Can we regulate? You know, there's a petition that, that was shown to me that says, people in Longmont do not want oil and gas drilling in Longmont. It is my understanding and what we have been told, that we cannot, the city council cannot ban fracking. I guess I'm looking for a definitive yes or no.
Mayor and Council, that's correct. The, the Voss case that they, Mr. Wilson was referencing, was the city of Greeley, attempted to ban- to ban drilling outright. The Colorado Supreme Court said no, that it was preempted under the Oil and Gas Act for the state.
It was also suggested by a member of the public that if you wait too long to mine your rights, you lose it. Is that, is that, is that a correct statement?
I think that's incorrect.
Can I follow up on that?
Sure, yeah.
When the court was dealing with the Boss case in Greeley in the mid-'80s, it could not have recognized the industrial scale of what's before you, nor could have it recognized the possibility of horizontal drilling, which might give you an opportunity to restrict and ban pads within the city but allow the resource to be acquired by horizontal drilling from outside. What the court is ruling in Boss is that the state has a preemptive issue with respect to obtaining the full resource. It focused on that kind of trap I was describing because that's what was being developed. It hasn't yet focused on this new industry nor its new resource of unconventional shale that exists throughout the city.
And I know that you, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm...
I was at a hearing with the BLM where we were arguing with them that they needed to do some comprehensive studies on what this might mean to the people of Colorado and I was told by a geologist from the Department of Interior that horizontal wells in Alaska can actually be drilled up to six miles. So I have no corroboration on this, but if it can be done in Alaska, I think it could probably be done here. It certainly will increase costs, but it certainly removes a lot of the obstacles you have with the oil and gas company coming directly into the midst and your schools. So if this can be done in Alaska, I would suggest it might be able to be done here.
Well, and to that, all different states have different rules and regulations. The oil and gas commission person, I'll give you an opportunity to, you know, to also speak. I watched the video, the three and a half hour video and I understand there was a lot of back and forth regarding what can be done, what is factual, what is not factual. If you have any, I'll give you an opportunity and I'll give you one as well, since they're just gonna jump up and come up here.
Yeah, so I'm Debbie Baldwin and so could you ask, would you just re-ask your question?
I guess the, the question was, could we, one was, could Longmont ban? And the answer I got was no. And the other one was, if you have a long-term claim to mineral rights, do they just go away? As it was suggested by a member of the public.
I, I believe that you wouldn't be able to ban fracking, you wouldn't be able to ban drilling, but I'd like to believe that we could work together so that we would figure out how to ensure that that's done to protect public health, safety and welfare. It's done in other parts of the state, it's done in other parts of Weld County in close proximity to Longmont. And so I would like to hope that we can work together using the process for consultation. You have the right to have a local governmental designee, that local governmental designee can become very involved in the process, can make, you know, solicit or make comments, can ask for consultation with the health department that then triggers consultation to put on additional conditions of approval on site-specific permits. As far, I'm sorry, what was the other question?
The other one was?
Yeah, okay, so as, as a city encroaches or moves, you know, as urban development encroaches around an existing oil and gas well, I think you're, you need to set up setbacks so that you don't have development coming up in, in close, close proximity to that oil and gas well. But I also think that if additional drilling is taking place and you have rezoned an area for something else, that you could, you could have changed requirements for noise, for dust, for roads, for lighting. So I do think there's an opportunity for you to have an input in what's done when a city is grown up around an existing oil and gas.
And that's something that I'm looking at, so thank you. If you wanna, you know, it's my time, so, you know, we had two other members come up, so I'll give equal time. And then I have other questions, just a few other quick questions, Mayor.
Mayor, Mayor Potem, councilmembers, thank you for the opportunity to speak. It is important to take presentations on energy development in context, so I hope to provide a little bit of context for some of the things you just heard in the presentation.
Well, you know, and you gave your presentation several weeks ago, so you know, I guess I'm just looking, if you can address the two questions that I asked, I'm not looking for the full, you know, 15, 20 minutes that everyone, you know...
I don't have a full 15 minutes, but I would be happy later if you're interested to provide some accurate information for misinformation that was presented in the earlier presentation.
Well, part, you know, and, and I will caution everyone that everyone's fact is not everyone's fact. So I guess just give us the information that you have and, you know, kinda like what we have, we, what we do here, we try not to, to impugn anyone's motives or things of that nature, members of council, members of staff, members of the public. So I, I'm just, if you can answer my questions, that'd be fantastic.
Sure, can you repeat your two questions?
My two questions were, can we ban, can we ban fracking? And the other one was, if you wait long enough to claim your mineral rights, you lose them.
So the answer to the first is no, you cannot ban fracking under state law. In fact, many presenters tonight urged a six-month moratorium and I would state in the, in the spirit of context, that it's possible to work with industry and you don't have any decisions before you tonight and I would urge, if you must take action tonight, that you do something like Commerce City did last night, which was have a one-month timeout to ascertain what the needs are and to, and on behalf of industry, I can say we can commit to working to ensure that there's no permits before you in that timeframe. On the second matter, there, mineral rights do not expire and so the answer is no to that.
Thank you. You know, and I wasn't trying to come down on you, it's just that, you know, when, the way we operate, if anyone attacks a member of council, I'm the first one to say, you know what, that's not appropriate. If you attack a member of staff, it's not appropriate. Attack a member of the public, still not appropriate. We're all here, we all have different points of view, let's just let them all hang out. You know, I, I may not agree with the two presenters, fully with the two presenters, I may not agree with, with what you guys have said either, so.
Any further questions?
No, I'm good, thank you. The other thing is, and Dale, and I will ask you, you know, everyone was saying to stop all permitting process, do we have anything before the, the city of Longmont right now? Any requests for land use, any permits? You know, again, we cannot regulate what goes to an extent without, within state law, we cannot regulate the drilling operation, but do we have any permits in front of us currently?
Mayor Combs and, and Mayor Potem Santos, we do not have any application in front of us for consolidated drilling at this point that I'm aware of. And again, those would be submitted to our planning division when they are submitted. And we do have a request from Cougar Land with regards specifically to the seismic survey application that I do believe we need to bring forth to you at some point.
Well, and, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Mayor and Council, I just would like to clarify, we don't have an application, but we have been going through the pre-application process for the potential of two applications coming in from top operating, one within Boulder County and one in Weld County.
Okay. Thank you. You know, again, it's my concern that folks are getting a little bit ahead of themselves about what we can and cannot do. That's why we're having these meetings and trying to lay out whether you agree with these guys, you agree with these guys over here, or you're somewhere in the middle. And I, I think most of the members of council are somewhere in the middle. You know, I, I keep getting these emails that the application's done, it's a done deal, councilmembers have signed off on it, that's false. You know, there, I was given a, a folder of about 200 letters that, you know, I have gone through and some asking for a personal response. I'm one person, one person. I try to respond to each and every, each and every email that I get and try to respond to letters that I get or phone calls that I get. Some, some people get a response, some people won't, sorry. I'm one person. Trying to do the best job that we, that we can possibly do and try to respond and try to listen to the concerns of everyone involved. And we might, we might butt heads, we might not butt heads, but at least we're here trying to listen and trying to gather information. And with that, you know, what I'll just say is that I would like to see what, what Brian, there you are, Brian, what you guys are thinking about drafting. I know you mentioned it, you know, it's something that we may wanna consider, but again, a little bit of here, a little bit of there. Bruneville may not be the end-all, be-all, Weld County may not be the end-all, be-all, Boulder County may not be the end-all, be-all. You know, I'm not looking to emulate one particular city, I'm looking what's best for Longmont and the surrounding area.
Councilmember Bagley?
Thank you, Mayor Combs. Like Councilmember Santos, I almost called you senior Councilmember Santos. Yes, yes. The, I'm, I'm getting, we're all getting mail constantly and this, this is just, you should see the emails because they're easier to write. I, like Councilmember Santos, try to respond. There's lots that say I demand a response or would like a response, I'm hoping that this suffices for my response. Four weeks ago, an interesting thing happened in my home. I woke up and it was cold. Our furnace broke. In addition to forking over like four grand for a new furnace, I had to wait all weekend. It was cold. I learned that weekend that I really like heat. I learned that weekend that there's a lot of people in town that don't have heat. Like you in the audience, I like clean air, I also like clean water. I don't know, I'm not an expert in these things. Two months ago, I had the liberty to sit on my couch and spout ideology. I had the opportunity to sit there and say, oh yeah, well, you know, to hell with fracking. I also had the opportunity to say, oh no, drill, baby, drill. Well, funny thing happens once you're elected, you start getting inundated with information, the experts start talking to you and then you're stuck having to come up with a decision. Stupid me for thinking that we'd actually have the opportunity to absorb information and just vote. I thought that's how it's supposed to work. Silly me. So I'm gonna assume that the experts, Mr. Wilson, and I didn't catch the name of the distinguished gentleman that came later, I'm just gonna assume for a moment that they're right. Fracking is an evil, that earthquakes are coming. It doesn't change the fact that we can't stop it in Longmont. And my other concern is, and I alluded to it earlier, right now at Union Reservoir, they're fracking. If Longmont proves to be too difficult, they're gonna do exactly what you're gonna find. Drive, drive tomorrow, drive by Highway 119, go down to the high Chevy dealership and you'll see dozens and dozens of semi trucks. They're fracking. And the question is, are we going to have a say in what happens in our community or are we gonna leave it up to Firestone and Greeley who are 10 to 40 miles away? I don't like the choices we're being offered. I would love to stick my head in the sand and say, oh my gosh, I want this to go away, but it's not. But I do know that I can reach out and grab that man by the neck, at least before April 1st, and say, what have you done wrong? I can ask Dale, Mr. Roddymaker, what happened with the benzene on that site? Because if we put a moratorium, or not moratorium, wrong word, but if we try to go to war with the state, oil and gas companies are gonna do exactly what they're doing now. They're gonna refrack that Ryder well, that's in Boulder County, we have zero jurisdiction there. They're gonna go down to Firestone, north or southeastern portion of Union Reservoir, they're gonna frack the hell out of it. They're gonna go to the northwestern portion, unincorporated Weld County, they are gonna frack the hell out of it. Longmont has these little pieces around Union that, heaven forbid, we actually permit fracking to occur, at least until the state can come up with a solution, we can hire someone, I presume, that was my next question, to make sure that top operating doesn't spill, that there isn't benzene leaking from the tires, that, I mean, all the things. So that's kind of, my constituents, that's what I'm thinking. How do we protect Longmont? I'm not looking at waging a war against fracking, I'm not looking at putting money into big oil. I'm just saying, in the short term, what do we need to do to protect our city? So that's kind of where I'm coming down. So I only speak for one-seventh of council and I don't know where my council members stand, but this is what I'd like to see. All those little X's, Mr. Schumacher, that I saw on the graph, awesome job. I'd like as many X's as possible in our column.
Yeah, put more X's.
I'd like either us to hire or assign a city employee that can go out to the fracking sites and babysit when they're fracking or drilling. I would also like to see us reach out to Weld in Greeley, or I'm sorry, Weld County, the city of Firestone, basically any municipality or jurisdiction on our borders and get permission to send this employee out to watch and observe as well and just get their permission. I'd also, nobody here, we've been hesitant to ask about the money, but I'm assuming there's like lots of money. I'd like to know how much money is in it for the city and come up with ideas, well, how are we gonna use the money? I mean, we've done away with affordable housing, we've talked about El Comité and the Latino population. I talked to Don Haddad today about our educational, you know, shortcomings. I wanna know how much money there is and what we can use it for. And then also the seismic testing issue that's coming up. I, I think back to the airport issue, you signed a lease and now we're stuck forever. My, my question is, as we move forward on the seismic testing, my question is for you, our creative attorneys, is there a way to allow the seismic testing to occur but also ensure that if we find something, they're gonna frack from well without our population and come to us rather than finding stuff and then putting the drills in Longmont? So that's kind of my two cents. I don't mean, I don't know if that's possible, but these are my thoughts.
Most fracs are less than a mile long. So the idea that you can go seven miles away and frac to Longmont from seven miles out as, as far as I know is, is unrealistic. I think if you, if a company has the right to conduct seismic operations, they probably have a relationship to either owning the minerals or being able to exploit them and they in all likelihood would have to agree that if they find something, they're not gonna develop it and in my experience, that's, doesn't happen very often.
All right, thank you. And then, and then one other point, and then I'll relinquish the floor. Just as an example, we can either, in my, in my business, I always tell my clients, we're gonna try this the easy way and then if we don't get the easy way, we try it the hard way. I'm a big believer in trying to work with the oil companies until the state figures out what to do. And what I mean by that is, like, for example, I called up and asked city council, we have an open invitation to go watch them frac at the end of the month. I'm gonna take advantage of that, I wanna see what goes on. I know council, who's been working overtime on meeting with certain members of the public, many of you here today, a few of you are gonna be invited. I mean, I want all of us, the more information we all have, the more powerful we become. So again, that's, that's kind of what I'm thinking.
Councilmember Samori?
Thank you, Mayor Combs. Like Councilmember Santos and Councilmember Bagley, I also have received a lot of written letters and emails and I'd like to thank all those people that sent them to me and acknowledge in fact that I have gotten them, I have read them, I have paid attention to what, what you've said and unfortunately, there's no way that I can respond to all of you that requested them. So by this acknowledgement, I want you to know that I've listened, I've heard, I've read and the reason we're here is to learn as much as possible and be as careful as possible in decisions that we make that affect all of our futures because we live in Longmont as well and we have children, we have wives, we have homes that can be affected the same as anyone else.
Husbands?
Yeah, husbands. Well, anyway, we are trying to gather as much information as possible that can help us make the best decisions possible and I appreciate all of your input and your patience with us.
Councilmember Witt?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanna have a teaching moment. Teaching moment is, even if you have previously spoken, you... you, it's inappropriate to jump up and answer a question that wasn't addressed to you. I know that a lot of people, you haven't been in council chambers very often, but um, if ever you're in that situation, our mayor is in charge of the meeting and if he or a council member requests that you come answer a question, then you may address the council. And I would like to respond to a question that, that has been asked by Mayor Protem Santos who says, do property mineral rights expire? Property rights are a fundamental American principle. And I want you to very carefully, can, oh, property rights are not a fundamental American principle, sir? Oh, I, 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 I would strongly disagree. How we use our, how we access and as long as it doesn't interfere with others, but fundamentally, we have property rights, which is so different from, from many of the countries that we immigrated from. And it was what sets us apart. So we need to remember that it's one of our fundamental freedoms. And yes, it is tricky and difficult, but um, it's worth, it's worth fighting about. And I, I just wanna throw out, when we're talking about property rights and et cetera, when we're talking about city-owned lands and, and where we own the mineral rights. At this point, I am not comfortable with the city leasing those out. And I would like to hear other council members weigh in on that, but I, I, I feel that right now, uh, I, I don't feel that our backs are up against the wall. And uh, I think that I, since we currently do not have leases out, is that correct Dale? We currently have no leases, is that correct?
Councilmember Witt, that's correct. Um, if you recall, one of the maps that I had, there's a number of city properties that are not currently under lease. And we are not, um, staff has not brought back to you that request to lease at this point either.
Okay, so I, I'm just letting you know where I'm standing right now is, I feel that um, the way, the feedback I'm getting and it doesn't mean we never, ever, ever will, that in the foreseeable future, I don't see that it's necessary for us to do that. But yes, we do have many problems facing us, like when we have somebody who has the mineral rights and they are within the city, then we do have to uh, deal with those. But taking on more, more problems, I, I don't see the need for it.
Yeah, I'm gonna jump in here for my two cents. First off, I have spent a lot of time on this issue. I've watched several documentaries, I've read several papers, I've watched several YouTube clips. I've read several emails, several letters. I've taken this really, really seriously and uh, I agree with Brian Bagley, we need more X's in that chart, we need to close some system, we need to upgrade our regs to make them as tough as we can, to give us the most protection we can. We probably need monitoring wells. So because of that, and I would like to at this point make a motion to impose a moratorium on acceptance or processing of any land use applications, permit or any other applications requesting approval to conduct oil and gas extraction or operation activities within the city limits for a period of a hundred and twenty days, beginning December twentieth, two thousand and eleven, with the ability to possibly expand that by another thirty to sixty days if we do not have all of our regulations approved that we want in place by that time.
Councilmember Inley.
I wanna get something straight and somebody has to tell the truth about what's been going on in the city. In June of two thousand and eleven, the city was made aware that there would be a permit coming forward. It's already December. Our codes surrounding oil and gas drilling are in pitiful shape and have been for over ten years. Why this hasn't been revised before now is beyond me. I cannot understand why we've waited so long to do this. It's um, it's awful. I would agree to a moratorium so that we can get our codes up to date and address all of our concerns. I also want the city staff to take a look at the um, the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board's recommendations. They did an excellent job of addressing what our concerns are. Uh, I don't think I need to read them because you all have a copy of those. You need to look at those, take a look at the other municipalities who have redone their codes recently. And, and get it done, get it done now, it should've been done a long time ago.
Councilmember Santos.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs, I agree. Also, Terry Gelver, the Water Board, wrote a very excellent letter that members of council got. So I know Dale, you got it and I would hope members of staff get it as well. I'd like to see this done. Not, done appropriately, you know. I will go, I, I will go along with a hundred and twenty days, Mayor. I, I, I do, I am concerned about an additional thirty. However, I wanna put the fire under staff and the boards and commissions. Get the best information you possibly can, and I'm not trying to rush anything, but get it done. If we haven't, you know, had these rules and regs been done properly and looked at over the last ten years, we wouldn't be in the situation that we are now. So. Get the best information, you know, involve, involve, you know, the four people or whoever. Let the boards and commissions hash it out, get at the planning and zoning and get it before council. I would love to see it done before a hundred and twenty days. But if it takes a hundred and twenty days, fine. But beyond a hundred and twenty days, you're gonna lose me. Because that just tells me that we're not getting our job done.
Councilmember Levison.
Yes, um, can I, uh, I just um, want to uh, get a point of clarification. When you made that motion, I seconded it, that moratorium would be effective um, uh, today, December twentieth, for a hundred and twenty days, which I calculate to be April eighteenth?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, with the possibility of an extension if, if we need be.
Yeah, only, I kind of agree with what um, Gabe, uh, or Councilmember Santos says that uh, we just need to really try to get it done in a hundred and twenty days.
And, and I also would like to um, not only look at our land use regulations, but look at what other regulations, like the, the stormwater permitting. It might be that um, we look at um, different and additional regu- um, regulations for that classification under five acres of disturbed earth. Because, you know, I, I think there's a five acre rule that um, I recall and that might just be because I read too much regulation in the past and parts of it stick and, and I don't remember accurately, but I think there are different regs for, for um, less than five acres. I'd, I'd like, like, to look at um, the broad spectrum of, of regulations and uh, uh, see what we can do. Um, I also uh, have read everything and I don't think that, I haven't, I haven't gotten perception that anybody has uh, thought that we're not paying attention as a council. Um, it's just a lot of work and um, frankly, you know, we could all go out and look at a well-being frac, but you know, we could look at the water flowing in the wastewater treatment plant, we wouldn't know if it was properly treated when it flowed out. So, I mean, we're not industry specialists. We could stand there and watch an industrial process happen. Although, you know, when you make beer, dentists, you can tell if it's good when it comes out. Um, we don't really have that kind of um, of uh, um, uh, if you will, um, a taste test that we could do um, out at a, a site. But I think that um, it's nice to go look at the industrial operation and understand the process. However, that's not what we can regulate either. So um, there is some limited value going out. I think that it um, uh, is a good thing to do. Um, I will try to fit it into my schedule as well. Um, I would like to know what, since that Weld County Road twenty-six and a half, we've taken over maintenance of that, that piece that goes outside of, uh, east of Union Reservoir. Um, wouldn't we have, didn't we take that when we talked to Weld County Commissioners and with Firestone, that now we have, you know, maintenance of that little piece of Weld County Road twenty-six and a half, actually east of the city?
Mayor, that is in process of working with the other two jurisdictions and it will be coming into our city sometime in the spring.
Well, shouldn't we maybe look when, when Councilmember um, Bagley talks about, you know, checking in influences, wouldn't we get some kind of notice for any kind of building or industrial use that would, you know, enter and exit that roadway if we have maintenance agreement on that? If we're the maintainer of that? Just like CDOT, we have an agreement for ingress and egress with CDOT on one nineteen.
As I indicated earlier, our IGA with the uh, other entity indicates that they will refer uh, activity within a mile of our boundaries. Uh, and we certainly will work to see that they do that and we do the same. But uh, if we don't know about something that it's approval, then we don't have a lot of control over that as of right now.
But would that Weld ca- piece of one cal- Weld County Road um, si- twenty-six and a half be considered our boundary? If we own, if we're maintaining it?
If to such time as we take it over, yes.
And, and so when would that be, um, you said sometime in the spring?
It'll be done in the spring, by, by March it will be done.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Bagley.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I had a mentor once who always would say deadlines stimulate progress. And uh, I, I, I would support the hundred and twenty, uh, hundred and twenty day moratorium. I would be hesitant to extend that deadline, only because if we set a deadline, we hit our deadlines. You know, drill baby, drill on the deadline. And uh, that way uh, staff has time to get things done. We have time to continue asking questions. Uh, we're not viewed hopefully by the state as banning anything. And um, yeah, we just all need to do what we need to do.
Councilmember Levison.
I, I would also, when we're, um, before we vote on this, um, ask staff at the sixty day mark to give us an update, how are we doing? You know, can we still get it done? Because, you know, I, I don't wanna worry Councilmember Bagley too much if we're at day a hundred and we haven't seen a lot and, you know, all of a sudden we're, we're twenty days outside, you know, getting close to the deadline and we don't have anything, all the ducks in a row. And, you know, we also have to consider when we see these regulations. Our opinions evolve over time, new information comes to us all the time. And um, it might be that the first go-around that we see these um, new land use code and everything else, we may have some suggestions to make, so it's gonna be up to us to meet the deadline as well. So when we get something on um, a, a study session, it'll probably be an entire study session just on the various rules and regulations that we're updating. And I'd ask to give us that luxury of time to be able to not just see something a week ahead of time and maybe let us take it in some chunks. But if you can give us something in, in sixty days just to tell us, um, you know, progress, then that would be great. Even, every thirty days might be nice, but I, I'd rather you do the work than, than update us too much. But a note every once in a while helps.
Okay, seeing no other questions, uh, shall we vote? Oh, excuse me. Councilmember Bagley.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Can we, what exactly are we voting on? And, and, yeah, I, I guess, I guess, I guess I know, are we going to remove the additional thirty to sixty? Are we gonna set it at one twenty? Are we voting on the original motion?
Yeah, the original motion unless you wanted to, I mean, my intent on the thirty to sixty was only if, like, let's say we got some new information, ninety days into this, there was something really critical we missed and we wanted to add and we just couldn't get it done.
Councilman Bagley.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. The uh, my, my, I've talked with some of you and in my mind, I call it the frac U line.
Yeah.
And uh, the frac U line is that point where the oil and gas companies say, you know what? You guys are too difficult, we're just gonna drill anyway all around Union Reservoir, we're not gonna work with you, we're gonna work with Weld. And so I, I, we can always extend it, or we can always decrease it. I'm just trying to appear open and willing to work with all parties and protect our city. And so I would-
Would you like to amend the motion then to take out my last statement?
I would, I would actually move or ask, request, um, that we just actually remove the thirty to sixty day potential extension, set it at a hundred and twenty days.
Hard limit.
Hard limit and then uh, staff can go to work and we can reassess if needed.
Okay. Um, do we, do we have a second?
Nope.
Okay. Alright, so. Yeah. So now we have to vote on the amendment first.
Yes.
And then go back to the original motion. So, but we're voting on the amendment, which is basically just removing the, the, the ability with it, within this motion to add thirty to sixty days. I mean, we can always do that as a council later on. But to take that out of the motion, that's the amendment to this motion. So we've had first and second. Councilmember Levison.
You know, can I ask um, Attorney May, um, procedurally, should, we had a motion on the table and there was a motion to amend? So do we do that with just the motion to amend and the second? And if I don't want to allow, as a second on the original motion, if I don't wanna allow the amendment, I, I can't do that.
Mayor and Councilmember Levison, that's correct, the last statement, it's a subsidiary motion should be voted on by the majority of council.
Okay, I, I just want to um, let councilmembers know that um, while it's nice to have those hard and fast deadlines, I think having that wiggle room tonight, it is an option. It's not saying we're gonna pull the trigger. It's just simply saying, we're gonna have a hundred and twenty days and then at least a hundred and twenty days and a possibility, a possibility, not, I mean, if, if we were gonna be buying a lottery ticket, there is a possibility that you buy that dollar ticket and you'd win that million dollars, but it's not really likely. And I think the way we've communicated with staff is that we really wanna get it done in a hundred and twenty days. But on the other hand, there could be things that come up. And we have, I think that having the flexibility right now just gives us that flexibility ahead of time so we don't have to revisit this. And uh, I just, I just think that it's a lot cleaner to say a hundred and twenty days with the possibility of an extension. And uh, I think that's what we did with the medical marijuana moratorium, that we had oppen- options to extend it. And uh, I, I'd like to stay with the original motion.
Mayor.
Okay.
Uh, just, that's true. On the medical marijuana, you adopted a moratorium for X number of times. You decided that you needed to extend it, it took another ordinance to do that. So regardless, it will take uh, council. If you wanted to extend it, you would have to adopt a new ordinance.
Councilmember Samore.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I guess from my perspective, if we give staff a hundred and twenty days, it lights the fire under them to get it done in a hundred and twenty days. If we give them the wiggle room right now, they might want to take advantage of that wiggle room. But they can always come back and ask for additional time and we can choose at that time to extend it. Or if they get it done sooner, we can also rescind the item as well. So if you wanna add as a friendly amendment, that we can rescind it sooner.
Councilmember Santos.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Yeah, it sounds like members of council are willing to go a hundred and twenty days. Councilmember Levison, you asked for a sixty day checkup. If I'm not mistaken, it takes thirty days to do an ordinance. If I'm not mistaken, it takes 30 days to do an ordinance. That's 90 days. If we need to, staff come back and says it's 60 days, okay, we're going to need another 30. I'll entertain it at that time. But we, I think you have seven members of council, and I could, I'm not, a majority of council are, are willing to say 120 days, get it done. You know, what more do you want? You know, if you get a, you have, it seems the council's willing to do this. Let's not push it too far to where now you start losing votes. Don't, don't want to do that. You know, as, as a former vote counter, you, you want to make sure you have at least four to pass a vote at city council, or in, in Congress, 218. I, I'm, I'm fine with the, the friendly amendment. You asked for a 60-day checkup, we're going to get the 60-day checkup. At that time, if staff says, we need, we're going, we're going to need another 30, we'll entertain it at that time. But again, as I said, and I said very strongfully and forcefully, get it done.
Let's vote on the amendment. Okay, it passes with Councilmember Levison dissenting. So now, would we like to, you want me to read the, the motion back to you, then? Or do you have it?
Mayor Combs, you're going to have to read it. You read it so fast, I was going to go back and catch it off the table.
Okay. The motion's to impose a moratorium on the acceptance of processing, let's see, on the acceptance or processing of any land use applications, permit or any other applications requesting approval to conduct oil and gas extraction and/or operation activities within the city limits for a period of 120 days, beginning December 20th, 2011. So any other discussions, or are we ready to vote? Or, excuse me?
Just, just one question. The thing is that technically, as stated, are they going to be able to keep picking up that benzene still? Okay.
All right. Let's vote. Excuse me.
Did you have the 30 to 60-day extension?
No, it's taken out. Yeah, because the amendment, the amended, friendly amendment took that out. It's just 120 days. It passes seven to nothing.
Mayor and council, I would like to just clarify. So what we see as our direction is during this 120-day moratorium on application and processing, is you would like us to develop new regulations with as many X's in our column as possible, reflecting the best of the practices that you see here, or even an entity, county or city, that we don't have on our matrix right now. And that come back to you with a reasonable regulatory scheme that you will consider, and we'll do that with a checkup within 60 days. And to the best of our ability, we'll have this done in 120 days. Only caveat, I'd like to have everyone recognize, is that staff will not be trying to delay getting this done in 120 days. But as you've seen tonight amongst yourselves, and this big public out here, there's a lot of debate that takes place, and we're going to have to be able to manage that, listen to people, have advice from boards and commissions, at the same time move it forward without everybody second-guessing everything, every step of the way, or we'll never get done. So our approach is going to be to get on with the job of getting it done while we listen and participate as much as possible, but we will need to move.
Thank you, Gordon. Councilmember Levison?
Yes. So are we going to see anything in a formal, kind of an ordinance or anything? Or have the moratorium written up and published like an ordinance to communicate it, or just our vote tonight? Because when we did the, the medical marijuana moratorium, didn't we do it by ordinance?
Mayor and Councilmember Levison, that's correct. It was by ordinance, and we fully intend to bring a moratorium ordinance, first reading January 10th.
And then the second reading would be January 24th, and then 10 days after that, well, it would be retroactively, usually it's a 10-day period for any ordinance to be enforced, but currently, did our, our vote actually enforce something as of, the prohibition is in force as of December 20th?
Certainly the direction of council. The ordinance will have the effective date of the moratorium being December 20th. The effective date of the ordinance will be 10 days after publication for the charter.
Great. I just wanted to clarify that to make sure we weren't in some legal no-man's land.
Mayor, then there is one other item we'd like to direction on. And that is, do you want us to entertain bringing back to you a permit for a seismic survey on city lands?
Councilman Santos?
Thank you, Mayor Combs. The Water Board was in favor of that, to see, to know what we, one, that they were, they were very curious about knowing what we have. What, whether, what we do with that information, whether we purchase it or get to look at it. I was paying attention, Kim. It is vital to know what we have. So I, I would, if you need a motion, Gordon, I would say, that I would move that we accept at least that, that application for that, that seismic survey.
Councilmember Levison?
So how does that fit into what, that we just voted on, a moratorium on activity? Isn't this a precursor as part of the application process, as being able to identify a site?
Mayor, the, the way I understood the motion, it was permit, permit for actual operations, and this is a survey. I do not see it being an operation, but that's why we're asking council on clarification, because we just want to know what we're doing.
Okay. Well, my motion said to conduct oil and gas extraction and/or operation, I didn't add exploration to that.
Did you, was your intention to add exploration?
Uh, no, because I knew that this was coming up, and that the Water Board wanted to, us to go ahead, so I didn't want to make my motion that strong, because I was worried that I wouldn't get it passed.
Okay. I, I guess, I'd be interested in, in seeing exactly how this permit is designed and, and the scope of it, and some of the safeguards that other boards have suggested. Also, I'm quite concerned, aren't we in the migratory winter bird gathering at Union Reservoir? And would operations in the future, don't we usually have eagles and migratory birds there until March? How would this affect that? I mean, are we going to be in conflict with the Migratory Bird Act?
Mayor, the recommendations that we got from the boards and commissions is that we would make sure that we avoided that, and so that's what we would be processing this permit for, if you tell us that you'd like for us to even consider it.
Thank you.
Councilmember Bagley?
Thank you, Mayor Combs. Um, we're coming up on magic hour.
Yeah.
The, I guess, the, speaking personally, 1/7th of council, I don't know a whole lot about this issue yet. And is, is there a downside to waiting two weeks to be able to read up? And, I mean, we've been so focused on fracking lately that, is there a downside?
Mayor, council, if you want to wait, all we were looking for is direction as much as possible. If you want us to bring back more information about the, the general scope of work that would be involved in the seismic survey, we can do that, and we can get your direction at a later date, and then we can act as you direct us.
I'd, I'd like to know what it is, how it happens, what's it used for. Right now, I'm just picturing a bunch of trucks driving all over the city and doing seismic surveys. And so I'd just like more information.
Councilman Santos?
Thank you, Mayor Combs. Dale, would you please, again, explain again what is being proposed by the boards and commissions regarding the seismic survey? And before you do that, I would move that we extend the meeting, because we have a question that was already addressed earlier, twice. I would move that we, to extend the meeting to finish the remainder of our agenda.
Okay, it's been, motion to extend the meeting, that's been second, let's vote. It passes. We will extend the meeting with Brian Bagley. I can't see who else.
I changed my vote. Oh, I actually don't like push the wrong button. I meant to vote no. So we'll just end this meeting right now. Is that what you want? I, I pushed the wrong button.
Change it. No, she can change it.
You want to play that game? You want to play that game? Really? On motion to extend?
Mayor?
Yeah. Councilmember Santos?
Thank you, Mayor Combs. Um, councilmember, I know it's getting late. To vote no to extend the meeting cuts public invited to be heard off, cuts mayor and council comments off, cuts the city manager and the city attorney comments off. I know it's late, I know people don't like to vote to extend the meeting, we're getting our work done. So if you vote no, and, you know, I know, Councilmember Bagley, I know what you're going to say. I understand. But it is, if you want to, if Councilmember wants to revote, and we, and it's for nothing to end the meeting, you've just deprived people that stayed here for the entire meeting their chance at the final call, public's invited to be heard.
Good point. Councilmember Bagley?
Thank you, Mayor Combs. I'm not playing a game, Councilmember Witt. I'm just saying that at 11 o'clock, bad decisions are made. I'm simply saying that at some point, members of this community will want to run for council, and they will not be encouraged to do so if we stay here every meeting after 11 o'clock. That's it. And so I'm voting no. I'm 1/7th, 1/7th of council, and I will vote my conscience, and I would encourage everyone else to vote theirs. And if there's somebody here who wants to be heard, walk me to my car, chit-chat with me, spent two and a half hours on Saturday with the, with Joe Bassman and David Pelster, and I'm willing to put in time, let's just don't do it when we're tired and when we make bad decisions.
Councilman Witt?
And I would say that if council members were more succinct in their statements, we could get out of this meeting a lot more quickly. And, you know what? I, I do want to change my vote. I'm changing my vote, please. Let's revote.
Does that where you get to revote? Okay. Okay, where's your vote? Okay, it passes, the meeting will go on.
Mayor Combs and, and Mayor Pretem Santos, the issue of seismic survey is spelled out on your council communication at page 151. The Parks and Recreation Board, as well as the Water Board, have both reviewed this issue, and have provided recommendations with regards to the conditions that they believe would be appropriate to include in that permit. It includes issues such as keeping the vibration trucks off of fields, only using roads and farm roads, laying out the cables by hand or by lightweight equipment, limiting the timeframe to a short time in February, or other time to minimize impact of recreation, wildlife, and farming activities. And that is the approach that staff would bring back to council for your consideration and acceptance. So in other words, the permit will be approved by the city council, not directly by the staff.
Councilmember Somory?
Thank you. Dale? Is that really realistic? I mean, can they lay it down by hand, and it doesn't add to the cost?
Mayor Combs and Councilmember Somory, that, that is, and we, we actually witnessed that when we were out on the site visit with them.
Thanks.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second. Shall we vote? Yeah. Okay, it passes with Councilmember Bagley and Levison dissenting.
So maybe we'll then take that direction, and we will come back at the appropriate time with information.
Okay. Now we're at the second public invited to be heard. So it's the final call. Is there anyone who would like to speak at the council this time?
There? Thank you. I'm Joe Bassman, 3414 Lakeview Circle. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, bear with me, I wasn't expecting to speak extemporaneously. Certainly, I commend the action of taking, following the request of the public and putting in a moratorium. To tell you the truth, I'm very astonished at the action here tonight. I hear council blaming the planning department for taking so long to come back to you. Yet the council, the previous council, has been involved with issues of gas exploration clear back when they were talking over these issues with Weld County. And this was in 2010, if I'm not mistaken. There, pardon me, I, I've read, I've read the minutes from a meeting that our council had with Weld County Commissioners, and I know that this has been a subject on the table for a long time. It's unconscionable that you're blaming staff, and furthermore, that you're asking staff to come back here in three months and basically say, if you don't have it in three months, then what are we going to do? Is staff going to be fired? Are you going to take the responsibility? Are you going to say, come on in and frac us? What is the consequence if it's not done in three months? What you're basically doing is telling the public, if staff doesn't give you something adequate, we're going to let them come in here and frac. I'm just astonished at the conversation and the way that it's been progressing.
Actually, it was, it was four months, I mean, 120 days.
Thank you. What I'm talking about is what happens if this isn't done? And I certainly see the need for deliberation. What happens if it's not done? Who's going to be fired? Who's going to be fracked? Thank you.
Anybody else?
Hi. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak for a second. It's Deb Gardner. I'm at 740 Judson Street, and I had previously going to offer up my voice to the moratorium, and so thank you. I can just be the first one to say congratulations and thank you, and I look forward to the process moving forward. There, there was, I wanted to have one, throw up one question that you all might want to ask, in that it is my understanding that the rules and regulations that were established by the Oil and Gas Commission in 2008 are not something that was carved in stone. Just a couple weeks ago, there were extra definition around the disclosure rule. And so this is a dynamic document that's ongoing. I know one of the things that was hoped to come out of that 2008 commission, that the rules and regulations around setbacks were promised to be revisited, and more definition come around that. That hasn't happened. The Oil and Gas Commission still needs to do that. And I think, again, there are, it's a dynamic document that the public and others have input to, and so we'll just have to keep an eye on how that landscape changes. So thank you again for your time, and thank you again for such good listening to all the people from the public.
Thank you, Deb.
Christopher Zuchak, 12624 Weld County Road 1. Thank you for imposing the moratorium. I think it's a wise idea, given the circumstances right now with the contamination. I have a couple things. Number one, I was told, meeting from a few weeks ago, that I would know whether or not I'm going to have a consolidated pad put in my backyard today by Mr. Radamaker, and whether or not that was going to be on my property or Bogut property, and I don't know the answer to that today. And a little bit more elaboration on- And a little bit more elaboration on that, with regard to accessing all of these minerals that are under the lake, there needs to be consideration with exactly what she said, these setbacks. We're talking about a sixteen-well consolidated pad, three hundred and fifty feet, uh, from dwellings. Now, when these laws were written several years ago, whenever they were, uh, they didn't account for the fact of being able to go under this lake and access these minerals under the lake, and therefore putting, uh, this pad right between my house and the lake. Um, and I think we all need to kinda take a look at that, um, because the laws are not, um, written for that at this time. Uh, but most importantly, I would like to know whether or not there's going to be a pad behind my house.
Thanks. Shelley Bassman, thirty-four fourteen Lakeview Circle.
Thank you.
Uh, I think it's most important to get it done right, however long that takes. To rush, haste makes waste. It's very important to get it done right. And to that end, it's awfully complicated. There, I'm wondering if there are experts, expert consultants in the field of oil and gas regulations from municipalities. And that I, if there are, I would urge the council to take advantage of that expertise, or the City of Longmont to take advantage of that expertise. And we're grateful for the moratorium. At least our two thousand regulations are, are going to get upgraded, and I want them upgraded quickly. Thank you.
Okay. Hafissinger, twenty-one ninety-nine Creekside Drive. Just to, uh, inform council that the Border Environmental Affairs meets tomorrow at three-thirty PM at eleven-hundred South Sherman, and we will be taking out the subject of, uh, and, and probably, uh, proposing motions as to what we would like to see, any surface agreement or ordinances on drilling and fracking, and the Border Environmental Affairs has not weighed in on the issue of seismic surveying as yet. So, uh, I, I think you and the public needs to know that. Thank you.
Thank you, Carrie. Strider.
Good evening. Strider Binstone, nine fifty-one seventeenth. I also would like to thank the council for the, uh, moratorium, and especially for very good quality input and discussion from the presenters and from, uh, the Oil and Gas Commission. I thought it was certainly, uh, honest and straightforward. We do have some concerns about the mandates, and that leans it in a certain direction, but I think we have gotten, uh, reasonable and scientifically within the realm, uh, information, and we certainly need to do, uh, deeper review. Hopefully, within a hundred and twenty days, we can resolve most of the conflicting factual sets, because clearly there are some conflicting factual sets. And, um, my concern, I, uh, Mr. Bassman, I, I like what he brought up, but I think, um, that the discussion was certainly appropriate, and I think Mr. Bagley, who didn't want to let us speak, I thought he was excellent in his, uh, posing of the questions. But, and also, of the point, it's, uh, about the amendment, that I don't think we have a default to automatic approval of anything without restrictions. I think, you know, the ninety days, uh, the hundred and twenty days, the, the, uh, the study will come in, and the council will decide at that time. So, I think you guys did a really good job on a very difficult issue at this point, and let's get back to work, 'cause there's a lot of work to do.
Thank you, Strider.
Good evening, my name's Brian Smith, I'm at one-one-six-six-five OCL Street in Westminster. So I just want to share some information, uh, as staff deliberates and looks at regula- regulations, don't forget to look at the, uh, Gas Commission regulations, which were just recently amended in, I believe, June of this year. So the rules in oh-eight have been amended, reflected new, uh, stipulations on various aspects of the industry. And also, uh, have rules in place that do anticipate multi-well pads drilling underneath lakes. Milton Reservoir, there's been wells that have been drilled thirty-five hundred feet out from where they started. So I just want to encourage the full gamut to look at the existing regulations, 'cause maybe they are appropriate, and maybe they do everything that Longmont and every municipality needs. I mean, that's the idea. Have one regulation, and just don't forget that they were just recently amended and added, you know, some more stipulations in the summer of this year. I think it was August of two thousand and eleven. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Teresa.
Teresa Foster, seven-twelfth Ironwood Way in Longmont. And I was hoping that, um, I was actually kind of concerned because, uh, city council or mayor did not have any additional questions for our two guest speakers. They had some really compelling information, and it's surprising to me that nobody asked them additional questions. Uh, my second point is, is the, the video that you have, uh, by Theo Colburn. I would really, uh, strongly request that you watch that, and I will be actually contacting you to find out what you think about it, and if that might be something that will help and influence your decision on a four-month moratorium versus the six-month moratorium, which is what the people requested. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, or almost good morning at this point. Uh, my name is Glenn Baxter. I reside at seventeen forty-four Montgomery Circle. Sorry, yes, uh, Glenn Baxter, seventeen forty-four Montgomery Circle. Uh, my neighbors actually work in the oil and gas industry, so I'm actually very sensitive to, uh, what, what we're talking about here. Uh, I wanna commend you all on the decision you've made. I think you've made a very difficult decision amongst, uh, evidence which is conflictory. Uh, it is very difficult to make decisions, uh, relating to information that is debated in factual evidence or, or evidence A, evidence B, as we talked about. And contrary, Councilman Bagley, uh, as you said, this actually process encourages me to want to run for city council, quite frankly. Uh, it's, it's fascinating to watch how it works. Uh, I have interest in government in general, but, uh, it's fascinating to watch how it all, how, how plays. Uh, and I wanna thank you all for staying here late. I would like to leave you with, uh, an interesting precept. Uh, we have some distinguished gentlemen here who have spent their life, uh, in science fields. Uh, you are in the field of government. Uh, some of you may come from a science background. But, uh, I think it's very interesting to, to look at, uh, the Challenger accident. You had Richard Feynman standing up in a congressional committee, taking a piece of an O-ring from the shuttle Challenger that had been damaged, placing it into a glass of ice water, and showing that it crapped when he removed it. That is what we would call a positive example or a positive conclusion. On the other hand, we have examples from, uh, executives such as Halberton drinking their fracking fluids and suggesting to you that that is safe because they drank it. That is a negative example of consequence from a scientific perspective. The fact that nothing happened to him does not prove the safety of what has been gone on there. And the reason I raise that example to you is that critical thinking skills are necessary here to making good decisions, to making good policy. Uh, those factors have taken into account the issues of the oil and gas industry, the fact that we want our homes to be heated, uh, the fact that we wish to live in a place that has good and clean air and water. And so, the challenge before this council and before, really, staff is to identify how, using the best methods that we know about this time, we can approve regulations that would, that would basically protect public safety. And I just want to thank you again for what you've done tonight. I think you've made an excellent example of, uh, what will be actually, probably something that the state will, will hopefully follow in, in our example. So, thank you again.
Thank you. Jeff.
I don't have to do the address again, do I?
No.
Whatever. Jeff, sixteen sixteen Summer Street. Yeah, I've been following the city council a long time, and I know how hard it is to, um, to do the, the huge task that you have before you. I think actually the task is, is, uh, impossible. And I think that limiting yourself to four months and not giving yourself longer, it, it, it just signals to me that some people on this council are not really serious about enacting, uh, meaningful regulations that would really address the problem. One other thing I wanna say is I was embarrassed tonight, um, Mayor, because, uh, we have very distinguished guests, very, very distinguished guests, that took their time, volunteered, and came all the way up here, I believe from Denver, to speak to the council, and, um, their behavior was criticized publicly by the council member to your left. And that embarrassed me. I think it embarrassed all of Longmont. It, it didn't, it didn't do any good, and I would just hope that the council members can control their impulses, and if they wanna criticize somebody, don't do it publicly. Thank you.
Jake.
I'll make this really quick, because I know you're all very tired, and Councilmember Bag- oh, Jake Merson, nine forty-nine Pass Drive, B.A.S.T.U.E. I'll make it quick, because I know Councilmember Bagley needs his blankie, so... My apologies, Councilmember Santos. Uh, real quick, I wanted to say that this is my last official, uh, council meeting for the semester. Uh, I've been working with Councilmember Witt on a project that you'll all be getting in your email inboxes very shortly. I won't go into detail here, and I wanted to thank you for a very lively discussion and making a very difficult decision this evening, and, uh, wish you all happy holidays.
Thank you, Jake. I guess it's time for, uh, mayor and council comments. Any comments, uh, Councilmember Santos?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I just wanted to, uh, you, councilmembers may have seen that, uh, Joe Ward has been, um, selected by the LAVA board to be the next LAVA executive director. It's my understanding he's very excited about taking the position and looks forward to talking to members of council. I would also, um, like to acknowledge the passing of one of our own city employees, uh, David Josh. Uh, my, um, and hopefully I can speak for the rest of the council that our heartfelt condolences go to his family. Uh, also, um, uh, Jeff began his career here in nineteen eighty-two and suddenly passed away, um, on the seventeenth. Also, another member of, uh, staff had a recent loss, um, Phil Greenwald, uh, his wife's grandf- uh, grandfather, I believe it was grandfather, grandfather passed away, um, just last night. Very difficult for, uh, to lose a family member at the holiday season. I know more than anybody, you know, know that very well. So my condolences to their, to their families and wish them the best. Also, I'd like to wish everyone a happy Hanukkah. Tonight's the first night. I'd also like to wish everyone a happy Merry Christmas, Happy Kwanzaa, Happy Festivus, and, uh, we'll see y'all soon.
Councilmember Samori.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Uh, Joe Ward, the new executive director for LAVA, will be starting on January sixteenth, and he will be contacting all the council members to set up, uh, time with them and get to know them, and other partners within the community. We're looking forward to having him. He's very excited, uh, to come and live in Longmont, and he, uh, brings a lot of energy with him, a lot of good experience. Uh, I'd like to say that I have every confidence in our staff and their ability to get the job done right and done in the amount of time that we allocated to them. Uh, they haven't failed us before, and I'm sure with this pressure we're putting on them, they won't fail us now. Again, I'd also like to thank all the people that came to speak tonight, that have sent us emails, that have written letters. I apologize, I can't respond to all of them. They're too numerous. But know that we do read them, we do listen, and we do hear everything you have to say. And, uh, finally, there are no birthdays that I know of, but I'd like to wish everybody, uh, Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, and many happy returns during this holiday season.
Councilmember Witt.
Apology rounds. Okay, first I need to apologize to my councilmembers for, for, making a big deal about voting no to extend the meeting. Next time I'll, I'll just go along and vote no with you, and we'll just see how that goes. And, and I'll just, you know, we'll experience that together. And, but I shouldn't have been looking specifically at you, because there are two other people who also voted no. So I'm sorry to pick, uh, Councilmember Bagley out. Um, also, apologies to our guests. We are all in this experiment of democracy together, and we do have, um, a way that we run meetings, and if you have not been in council chambers before, uh, people do not know that what's acceptable, what's not. I apologize for my delivery, and, and we will, and I'm sorry if I offended. But I do wanna say Merry Christmas, and I'm really enjoying council and really appreciate the dialogue that we have and the fun times that we have.
Councilmember Levison.
Yes, um, let's see. It is the festival of lights, many different lights, Hanukkah, Christmas, and, um, I wanna wish everybody a Happy New Year, and, uh, we'll be back on bright and bushy-tail January third. And, uh, I also will be spending a chunk of my time, as I did over my Thanksgiving break, with my homework assignments, that everyone has given me plenty of homework. So think of me when you're having your hot toddy and I'm working still. But it, it is, it, it does go with the job, and I, I take it very seriously. And again, when we get floods of fifty, sixty emails a day, even to just write one line, "Thanks for the email," sixty times, that would take a full hour. Not discounting that people have an expectation to receive a response, but I, I do read the emails, I do note where people, um, are sending me them from, your address, and your concerns, and, uh, certainly, um, I will make myself available to do as much work on the issues, um, as I always have. And, uh, um, also thanking the rest of the council members for their work on things, and, um, certainly, um, I don't, I, I don't think there was an intention to disrespect staff, but, um, in my opinion, um, there were a lot of regulations we should have been working on, um, the, the last year or so, but there really wasn't an appetite, um, of a lot of people to be looking at, at some things that, uh, I believe were a priority, and sometimes you get caught a little short on things, too. So, other, you know, former council had had priorities on what we had staff working on, and so, um, I think we have to be cognizant of, uh, uh, when we're giving staff new tasks, that some of the stuff that's on our work plan may not all get done, too. So, um, I wanna acknowledge that ahead of time, because I know there are items on the work plan that, um, may not get done because of these new directions we give you, so I'm not gonna fault you for that.
Councilmember Samori.
Okay. I forgot to mention earlier that, uh, I'd like to suggest to council that we consider reciting the Pledge of Allegiance even during study sessions, and I would make that as a motion and also give staff direction to amend the procedures for council if need be, to make that happen.
All right. Councilmember Bagley. We got a vote, first one. Okay, let's vote. Okay, it passes, seven to nothing. So from now on, we'll sustain the Pledge of Allegiance at study sessions. Councilman Bagley.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Councilmember Witt, to be clear, I love your passion and the zeal for which you serve in your office, both in public and in private.
Councilmember Santos.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Well, just for clarification, it was brought up that there was a meeting sometime in two thousand and ten. The meeting that I recall, and I've been on council for several years, was held October eighteenth, two thousand and eleven at the library with the Weld County Commissioners. It was the very first time that I ever talked to any Weld County Commissioners regarding oil and gas. It was October eighteenth, two thousand and eleven.
Councilmember Finley.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I just wanted to wish everyone a Merry Christmas. Thank you all for coming. I too read all of the emails and letters that come in. I too don't have time to get back to them all. I get back to as many as I can, but- I too don't have time to get back to them all, I get back to as many as I can, but you are part of the process, it's a wonderful thing. I admire your passion and zeal for public policy as well.
Well, I'd like to say a few things now. First, I really'd like to thank both of our guests, Wes Wilson and Phil Doe, for giving us these excellent presentations. You did a good job, it's the second time I've heard Wes Wilson, and he does an excellent job, and I enjoyed hearing both you speak, and I really thank you for your putting in the long hours. I'd also like to say that the, if we don't have everything done in four months, I don't care if I get voted down six to one, I'll probably make a motion at that point to extend it. So, you know, I'm working really, really hard on this issue for everybody, I really care about this, but I also hear councilman Bagley's concerns, too, that maybe it's better if we control it than depending on our neighbors to the east controlling things that we can't control, because there could be an awful lot of environmental damage that would affect Longmont out there on our eastern borders, too. So those are good arguments that you make. But anyway, I'd like to just say happy holidays to everybody, and I hope next year we can get these meetings done a little bit sooner. Councilman Bagley?
Thank you, Mayor Combs. There was just, I just want to point out, there's one thing in our packet we were asked to vote on. Ironically, it's after eleven I'm asking to vote, but or at least, what do we want to do with the firehouse? They're asking for five thousand bucks. This is the last meeting of the year. Can we address this in two weeks, or does the contingency budget go away? So we can just address it in two weeks?
It'll be in your two thousand and twelve contingency, and you can address it at that time.
All right, thank you. I guess city councilor or city manager, do you have any remarks?
Mayor just to wish everybody happy holidays and say enjoy your Tuesday off.
All right, thank you. City attorney?
No comments, Mayor.
All right, the meeting's adjourned.